I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order for Wednesday, June 21, 2017. We will begin today's public meeting with the invocation at my request by Pastor Marty Anderson of the Commonwealth Baptist Church in Alexandria. Pastor Anderson.
Let us pray. God of all things, you created humankind as an act of love and you made every single one of us in your image. You who created all of this, you who created infinite galaxies, created each of us with thought and care. You, your love for every person who runs deeper than the galaxies themselves. As being created in your image, you have made us to love each other as well. As odd as it may seem, even meetings like this becomes opportunities to fulfill Jesus' commandment to love our neighbor as ourselves, which is a good commandment for all to follow, not just the ones who have chosen to follow the way of Jesus. Tonight we come together as a community to voice opinions, to make decisions about budgets, policies, and the impact, the education and the well-being of our children and those entrusted with the responsibility to educate them. Tonight, we will certainly hear differing opinions shared as we seek the best ways to teach and nurture the development of our community students. As we share our thoughts, please help us to do so in the same way we teach our children to do, honestly, and with kindness and respect toward one another. Please help us to remember that when we talk about issues, we really talk about people because issues impact people. Throughout this evening, help us to keep in mind the people to whom we will be talking and help us to remember that each of them is created in your image and deeply beloved by you. Help us to seek what is best for each and every one of them, remembering that Jesus always chose the side of those most vulnerable, those who were seen as outcasts and sinners, those who needed an advocate. Guide our community as we seek what is best for all the children and youth in our county for there's no such thing as other people's kids. Our responsibility to them all, each of them is a gift. We pray this prayer in all the names that are holy in this place. Amen.
I know it's a packed house. If we have any students that want to come up and lead us in the pledge, you are welcome to do so, but any students that want to come up to the front and lead us in the pledge? There's got to be one student here somewhere, former student, quasi-student, kind of a student. There we go. Yeah. All right. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, can you give us your name, your grade, and where you go to school? I missed that part. I apologize.
My name is Robbie Moser and I go to Colgan High School.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. Motion is in order. Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Deutsch, motion passed.
And we're moving on to adoption of the consent agenda. Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Sorry, hold them up. I had some delays. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
So moving right along to Fred Lynn Middle School Corrective Action Update. Mr. Bixby.
Good evening Chairman Sawyer, Vice Chairman Jesse, members of the School Board, and Dr. Waltz. Joining me this evening is Fred Lynn Middle School Principal George Neves. We appreciate this opportunity to provide the School Board with an update on the school's corrective action plan and report on the feedback that we received at our triennial corrective action plan review with the Virginia Department of Education on March 20. The School Board knows from our previous update presentations that the school's corrective action plan is comprised of three essential actions.
Good evening Chairman Sawyer, Vice Chairman Jesse, members of the School Board, and Dr. Waltz. Joining me today is Ms. Jessica Parker. She is a principal on special assignment at Fred Lynn and she's sitting in the front row. This slide captures the first two essential actions that focus on implemented literacy and instructional practices that support student literacy and accelerating EL learning. At the March 20 meeting, VJOE requested that at Fred Lynn's next triennial update meeting scheduled for July 31st, we identify student work samples that show growth tied to those changes in instructional practices that have taken place through the essential actions. The essential actions also call for a reporting of observations and walkthroughs that are part of the plan's progress monitoring requirements. Since our last presentation, we have conducted observations in all 12 language arts, all four reading specialists, and all nine science classrooms. Slides four through six provide an example of a literacy practice, observation evidence, and student work sample that shows growth tied to changes in instructional practices that have taken place through the essential actions. The literacy practice is reciprocal teaching. Reciprocal teaching refers to an instructional activity in which students work independently and in small group reading sessions. Teachers' model then helps students learn to guide group discussions using four strategies: clarifying, summarizing, question generating, and predicting. The protocol allows for deep processing of text, note-taking, and opportunities to develop oral language skills. The professional development was provided by our Title I Professional Development Specialists between August 24th and November 3rd of 2016. Next slide will show an example of monitoring of implementation, classroom observations with growth-producing feedback. After the observation, teacher reflects on four areas. What did the students do well today? What was done to facilitate their success? Where can the students continue to grow and improve? And what can be done to facilitate their growth? The administrator, in reflective collaboration with the teacher, provides descriptive feedback. This slide provides a lesson artifact, student sample work showing change in growth due to this literacy practice. The student independently read an article about flying cars may be the wave of the future and responded by predicting, clarifying, summarizing, and generating questions. The student processed the text, made sense of the text, and gained a deeper understanding through reading comprehension. Reciprocal teaching also facilitates small group discussion, promotes higher-level questioning, and builds rigor and critical thinking. This slide outlines our third essential action: Implement and Monitor International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program. We have reported last month that we have received formal authorization and Fred Lynn's Middle School is an authorized IBMYP World School. Tonight's presentation is the last scheduled for this school year. As my retirement date of 30 June approaches, I would like to thank all School Board members for your leadership in setting a 2020 vision for a world-class education and always keeping in mind what is best for children. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board? Ms. Jesse.
I just want to compliment Fred Lynn and also to the principal who is now leaving. I've been by your school and had several conversations with you, but this is a challenging situation when you are called upon to publicly defend the actions in a school. And I just want you to know that I'm very impressed because I think that you and Ms. Parker, you both handled this in a very, very professional way. And good luck in all your endeavors. Are you going to a farm also? Because Mr. Goodfellow is going to be on a farm and he's going to have a good time. But I wish you well in your retirement and thank you for your contributions to Prince William County Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Williams.
I also would like to echo Ms. Jesse's statement. Mr. Neves, I cannot begin to, I don't even have the vocabulary to tell you how impressed I am and how professional you and your staff have been in presenting all the information that you have to us as a board. Personally, I of course have been to Fred Lynn. You were one of the first schools that I visited as an incoming board member. I think I embarrassed you enough maybe at the eighth grade self-promotion ceremony. For those who don't know, at the eighth grade promotion ceremony, I presented Mr. Neves with a gift as my appreciation to such an outstanding principal that he's been for that school and the community. If you don't know Mr. Neves, which I'm extremely impressed with, is trilingual, so he speaks three languages, which enables him to communicate with his students to the best of his ability and beyond anything that I could possibly imagine with my single language skills. But he also has gone above and beyond as a principal for Fred Lynn in his networking with the community, providing after-school services for our students, feeding students, Saturday School, clothing students, making sure that they have everything possible that they could need or should need in order to receive an education. And that is just something that goes beyond your job as principal and it shows how tall of a measure of a man that you are and how much you care not only for your students but for the community that you work in. And you have left big shoes to fill. I know that we have a wonderful principal coming in behind you, but you will be deeply missed and it has truly been my honor to work with you and thank you for all the education you have provided me as an incoming board member and not as an administrator or a principal in helping me to do my job, not only you but your entire staff, and also to the PTO. I really appreciate it because it all starts with you, Mr. Neves, the leader of the school facility. I wish you well on your retirement. I hope that you go to a nice fancy restaurant and that you get some time to do some things that you would like to do. And just my final goodbye and thank you. I would just be very honored if you would come up front so I could shake your hand, sir. I wish you well. Getting those extra steps in too for the Fitbit.
Additional comments or questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. No? That's it? Thank you very much. All right, moving on to citizens' comment time. I want to explain a few things before we move on. So there was some confusion, some on my part and some just general confusion, I believe, as well. I'll try to give the Cliff Notes version of what I've learned here recently. So in order to facilitate citizens' time since being on the board, we've worked with the clerk to kind of take lists at certain times so there's not so many people. Sometimes citizens try to sign up for a year's worth of citizens' time because they're upset with an issue or something maybe. So we've tried to work with the clerk on how to corral that a little bit and ultimately there was kind of two lists created. So ultimately what we're going to do is, there was an original list that was started without my knowledge originally and I'm happy. So we're going to start with that list and work our way down it and then we will work to the traditional list that we work on as well. So just want to make sure everyone understands kind of where we're coming from on that, a little bit of a difference there. So what I'm going to do is I will call the first 10 speakers up and as they're working their way to the front, I will go over the rules of citizens' time. So our first 10 speakers are, and there's reserved seats here up front, I do recommend that you come forward because it does take a while to work through the crowd. There's Bill Hoss, Lee Louder, Claire Gastonaga, Lee Carter, Kelly Orlovsky, Brian Pace, Ryan Orr, Amy Canava, Jay Page, and Alicia Smith. Now, as everyone starts working forward, we'll go over the normal rules of citizens' time, which is that you will have three minutes to speak. I will run that here from my computer and if it's done properly, although it is delayed sometimes, it takes a lot of click on, it'll pop up on the screen here behind me. 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow. It means it's time to start wrapping it up and at zero seconds, it'll turn red. I will need you to stop at exactly zero seconds when it turns red. I will say thank you when that time comes. Please use proper decorum at all times when addressing the board. I know there's a large crowd today. I know passions run high with the issues that are in front of the board here today. I will say this, loud outbursts throughout the meeting will not be tolerated. We need to run an orderly meeting. The School Board of Prince William County ultimately by law is a business board. We hold our business here in public. I do ask that everyone use proper decorum whether you agree or disagree. I will allow for mild applause but nothing long extended. We do need to move on and get the next speaker up and speaking. If there is a break of decorum, whether it be from the speaker at the dais or within the crowd, I will ask, we will have to ask uniform officers from Prince William County to make sure that that stops and you are removed from the room. So I do hope that everyone can use proper decorum throughout the entire time. I know passions run high, but I just felt like we could cover that from the beginning. With that, we have our first speaker is Bill Hoss. Bill, are you here? Okay. Lee Louder? Lee? Is Lee coming forward? No, I saw someone moving. I'm just making sure I don't miss somebody. Okay. Claire Gastonaga? Claire? Claire, were you in the room? Did you hear my whole spiel about three minutes and 30 seconds and all that?
I did.
Good. Okay. I didn't know if you just came from outside or not. I was just making sure we're all good. Claire, you have the floor.
And actually, my name is Gail Dady. I am here on behalf of Claire Gastonaga tonight. We weren't sure how to.
No, unfortunately, that's not something. You have to sign up on your own. Each individual signs up for themselves.
Okay. Well, Claire is my executive director. I'm an attorney at the ACLU of Virginia. I'd sent a letter to the board, so we were hoping it would be okay for me to speak on Claire's behalf.
No. Ultimately, ma'am, we don't really do it that way, unfortunately. I mean, I could do it without objection from the board. Is there an objection from the board?
Yeah, I'll object.
So, ma'am, I'm sorry. Thank you. Lee Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the staff. This is the second time that I have been here to address the question surrounding Policy 60. And every time that this question has come up thus far, we've had a lot of discussion about the impact that it will have on the students. Now, I'd like to speak about the impact that it'll have on our teachers. Our teachers in Prince William County work extraordinarily hard. They don't have the resources that they need, frankly. I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat that. So our current nondiscrimination policy, not protecting them based on their sexual orientation and gender identity, is frankly unconscionable. Currently, teachers in the Prince William County school system can be fired based on who they love or the gender that they identify as. They can also be fired based on rumor about who they love and the gender that they identify as. This is just one more thing that our teachers have to deal with day in and day out that should not be on their plates. If we want high-quality teaching staff in our schools, if we want our students to receive a world-class education, we need to make sure that our teachers feel safe in the classroom and don't have to worry about whether or not they're going to be fired based on who they love or rumors about who they love. That's why I'm here again, supporting the update to Policy 60, because discrimination against our teachers for any reason is absolutely unconscionable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, hold the applause, please. Hold the applause to us, please. We do need to get the next speaker called. Our next speaker is Kelly Orlovsky. Kelly? Okay. Brian Pace? Brian?
Well, howdy. My record should be on file, both here and on Greg Lutteck's website. So I do have a statement here and I didn't know that I was speaking today until about 45 seconds ago. So, "Good evening. I want to read something to you. It is the policy to provide equal employment opportunity to all employees and qualified applicants without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, disability, pregnancy, sexual orientation, gender identity, transgender status, genetic information, protected veteran status, or any other protected characteristic under federal, state, or local laws. Further, we believe in maintaining a workplace diverse and inclusive of beliefs, cultural background, job experiences, thoughts, and ideas. These unique characteristics brought together are fundamental to promoting innovation, increasing profitability, and driving results for our clients in the world around us. Diversity includes all of us. Putting this belief into action, diversity is part of our core values and is included in programs and practices throughout General Dynamics." According to his bio, Mr. Brand works for General Dynamics. Keeping in mind that this is a public meeting on the record, do you support the nondiscrimination policy and diversity initiative of your employer? Do you support them here? Now, I don't want to get Sean in trouble with his company. That's totally not what I'm up here about. What I do want is for him to pay attention to that discomfort that he just felt. That discomfort is the uncertainty of not knowing whether or not his employer has his back. Mr. Brand, GLBT employees and students in Prince William County schools feel just the way you just felt right now, all the time. Somewhere, the most qualified successor for Ray Darlington is out there. They might be GLBT or they might have a GLBT loved one. Would you apply for a job at an employer that makes you feel like you just felt? You have the ability to fix this. Do it. As School Board members, you are employers as well. You have to create the atmosphere that entices the best and the brightest, just as General Dynamics does. Their job is creating world-class aerospace and combat equipment. Your job is more important, creating the future of this country. Do you want to do less than they do? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Orr. Ryan? Orr?
Good evening. My name is Ryan. My address is on file. I live in Gainesville. I'd like to advise you to all vote against Policy 060. Now, I think people need to make this important distinction, that Policy 060 is not about discriminating against transgender people. It is about protecting our children, okay? We are not here to tell people, we really aren't here for that reason, okay? We really are worried about our children, that there are a lot of flaws in this policy because what happens when someone says that they are what they aren't, whether they believe it or not? We really need to be putting our children's safety first before anything else, even if it takes a lot more time to work it out. I think that, we've talked about this two weeks ago, that there are a lot more flaws in this policy than we care to address right now, and I think they need to be addressed. The other thing that I'd like to say is that I'm very disappointed that this politics has entered Prince William County. There really is no room for politics in our children's schools, in our children's lives, and in what should be very safe spaces for our children in their bathrooms. There is no reason to make them uncomfortable and I think we'll see a lot of bad fallout from implementing this without correction. I think we need to address the issues before we vote, but if you do have to vote, please vote no for our children. That way, we can move towards a better, safer Prince William County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Canava. Amy?
Good evening. My name is Amy Canava. I am the Chair of the National Association of School Psychologists LGBTQI2S Committee, a board member for NOVA Pride, the community sponsor for NOVA Pride Prom, former Vice President of PFLAG Winchester, a crisis counselor for LGBTQ youth, and a school psychologist in the DC metro area. That is how I've become accustomed to introducing myself because until June 30th of last year, I was not allowed to affiliate myself with the county I worked in despite being a nationally-recognized expert in the field. The Loudoun County School Board did not recognize my site, but they signed my voluntary resignation. Student, staff, and parents knew me as a vocal advocate for LGBTQ youth, and that is why I'm here advocating tonight. I teach my students that the law protects them retroactively, but not in the moment. And as it stands now, many counties in Virginia do not protect LGBTQ persons at all because antidiscrimination policies do not apply to them, further perpetuating justifiable feelings of being unseen, unheard, ignored, and unvalued in a country that they no longer feel supported by. The policy should protect all persons, but also those persons that advocate for them. Research shows that it literally takes one individual, one adult, to save the life of an at-risk LGBTQ teen. But if that adult's financial security is at risk and endangered by protecting that student, how many of them will reach out as I did? Revisions are needed to ensure that Prince William County remains a safe, supportive environment for all. What kind of message are we sending to students when the staff members they could look up to, relate to, and learn from have to hide? We won't truly know how many are affected until everyone feels safe at school. We won't truly know how many are affected until we let people feel safe to be who they are. I beg of you to protect a group of students I have spent the last 10 years fighting for and the staff who worked tirelessly to defend them, who deserve to be equally protected as well. I remind you that as a system, the cost of replacing staff is exponential. Enactment of this policy is the beginning of necessary protections and educations for staff and for students. Northern Virginia cannot afford to lose another young LGBTQ life to suicide in a district they do not feel supported by. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Jay Page. Jay?
Good evening, Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Waltz. My name is Jay Page. I come to you today asking with all of my heart to add gender identity and sexual orientation to the antidiscrimination policy. This is vital to ensure the well-being of all students in Prince William County schools. I graduated from Battlefield High School in 2016 and during my time at school, I witnessed many accounts of discrimination against LGBTQ plus children by their fellow students and staff. I witnessed several administrators yelling at LGBT couples for PDA while straight couples do the same nearby without issue. I, among other students, was bullied for my sexual orientation and gender and was not allowed to use the bathroom of the gender I identified with. Under the current political climate, LGBTQ plus people need as much help as they can get to feel safe because there are so many people who have been endangered and murdered simply for existing. The support from the school system is vital to ensure the safety of the students. The support from the school system is vital to ensure the safety of this group of students. Counselors at school who I talked to did not know how to deal with transgender issues and other related problems such as self-harm, so better training is necessary, and this policy could provide a foundation for such training. To address an issue which is often used against this policy, transgender people have no interest in looking at anyone else in the bathroom. It is a place of extreme discomfort for most transgender people, and they do not want to linger any more than is necessary. Harassment in the bathroom is already illegal, and this policy will not change that. This also counts for making sure someone's in their correct bathroom and looking at their genitalia to prove it. Lack of a policy protecting LGBTQ+ students will not prevent sex in the bathrooms. Kids in high schools do it now, and they will do it regardless. This policy will simply allow all people to use the bathroom, which aligns most closely with their identity. This year, I was a freshman at Cleveland Institute of Art, and the first day of orientation, all the students were asked their preferred name and pronouns, and told we could use the bathroom we felt most comfortable in. There have been no issues with perversion in the bathrooms, or anything else related at this school, or any others which have changed their antidiscrimination policy. With people discriminating so persistently, bathrooms are some of the most dangerous places for transgender youth, and support by an antidiscrimination policy would help trans kids in Prince William County schools to feel safer and more welcome in their schools. LGBTQ+ students are just that, kids who want to feel safe in their school and be provided the best environment in which to learn and live to become successful adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alicia -- sorry, I'm just keeping track of my page here. Alicia Smith?
Chairman, just to clarify, I received an email from the clerk, since Alicia is not able to be here, that she added my name to hers on the agenda. So which list is that?
Well, that's, I mean, again, that's a whole separate thing. So you contacted, just to make sure we're on the same page, you contacted the clerk to replace your name with that? Is that correct?
No, no.
So we'll have to stick with the current list that we're moving down now, just like we did earlier. Okay, so let me, hold on, just give me one second to get my list organized, because we have room for several more people to call. Give me one second. All right, based on the people who aren't here and a few speeches that ran short, our next six speakers will be Robert Martin, Rebecca Anderson, Bill Petrack, Tim Cox, Caleb Dalton, and John Deown. If you could come forward, please. Mr. Martin?
Good evening. My name, address, and all that stuff's on file. My comments are short. Before each meeting, the school board and we stand and voluntarily recite the Pledge of Allegiance. We commit ourselves to support one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. A policy which grants liberty to one group of citizens but denies liberty to another group of citizens is bad policy. A policy that divides a nation is bad policy. Just because the ACLU tells you that you can change a policy does not mean that you should or you must. Citizens who believe in the words "one nation under God" of our Pledge of Allegiance have been praying to our Creator, to grant you wisdom, to decide to honor God by making a righteous and just determination in regard to Policy 060. We have asked God to forgive those who do what is right in their own eyes, purposely turning their back on Him, and to show them their need for salvation, knowing that no matter what the outcome this evening, that all will stand before God to give an account of our actions, and God's judgments are righteous and absolute, and there is no appeal to His verdict. God created man and woman in His image. The sin nature ended in. Jesus tells us to love the sinner, but to hate the sin. And it's a lesson you should think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Anderson. Ms. Anderson?
I'd like to start tonight with scripture from 1 John, Chapter 3, verses 16 through 18. "And this is how we know what love is: Jesus Christ laid down His life for us, and we ought to lay down our lives for our brothers and sisters. If anyone has material possessions and sees a brother or sister in need but has no pity on them, how can the love of God be in that person? Dear children, let us not love with words or speech, but in actions and in truth." A few years ago, a Christian student told a Muslim student that she was going to hell. In fact, he told her that all Muslims are terrorists. The Muslim student told trusted adults improper school protocol was followed. There was a consequence for the student who made the bullying choice. There was a class meeting held to support the victim, and parents of both students were notified. Every teacher who worked with those two students were made aware of the situation so that they could take proactive measures to make sure that there wasn't another incident like that. In a different situation, student number one has an older sibling who's recently come out as gay. Student number two says with an earshot of their entire class that all people, all gay people are going to hell, and in fact, the only thing worse than 9/11 is gays. Student number one tells a trusted adult what was said, and the teacher follows through in the same way as before, and the teacher is told, "But student number two comes from a very conservative family. That's just what is taught in that house." And I wonder if the second situation would have played out differently if the PWCS nondiscrimination policy had specific verbiage that protects LGBTQ students from such bullying and/or hate speech. For as long as I remember, when I direct grade-level concerts, I ask each class to wear a different color of the rainbow. Having students lined up by shirt color is really easy for featuring individual classes, and when each full grade level is standing on the risers together, the visual aesthetic is really nice. Each year, my students ask me to wear a rainbow shirt so that I can match all their classes at once, and I always do. This past September, I came out as pansexual at this very school board meeting, and I spoke twice in favor of amending our PWCS nondiscrimination policy. This school year is the first and only year that I received complaints about the presence of rainbows at my grade-level concerts, and I was accused of inculcating my political beliefs on young children, which could not be further from the truth. I have emailed each member of the school board multiple times encouraging you to update our nondiscrimination policy, and I have only received three replies. In your reply, Mr. Brand, you told me you were saddened to hear about the bullying that I described, but that you had to look at the policy change from all sides. Imagine if a guidance counselor was doing a lesson on the bullying circle, and they taught the kids to consider all sides before standing up for one of their peers. Our children are learning from us with everything that we say and do, and I ask you, School Board, what will our children learn from you tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Petrack. Bill?
I am Bill Petrack from Woodbridge. Mr. Sawyers, I don't even know where to begin tonight. I'm astonished by your lack of integrity in the way you conduct yourself as an elected school board member. Everything you do is controversial, and you misrepresent every fact on every subject you speak about. The nondiscrimination policy is no exception. As a parent and citizen, it's shocking to know that some of you are continuously beating this drum that it is not a bathroom issue, when in fact, it is. Ladies and gentlemen, as you heard from a previous speaker, this is a bathroom, locker room, and sports-playing issue. Once you create a protected class for transgenders, a student born a male who says they are female can demand to use the girls' bathroom. If you deny that child access to their chosen bathroom, you will have just violated your own nondiscrimination policy by discriminating against a person who is in a protected class. I'm holding up a letter written by the ACLU to your board attorney, where they urge you to vote yes on this policy change. In the letter, it also informs you that with this change, you must allow a child to use the bathroom facilities of their gender which they identify with. They go on to say that if you fail to do so, you can be held liable under the Equal Protection Act of the United States Constitution. So it doesn't matter what guidance you give the superintendent on not changing policies, you will be sued immediately, and the policies will change. But some of you folks already know that, and it's sad that you will tell such lies, put our children in danger, and disrupt the lives of many families just to advance your political agendas. No one wants any child to feel discriminated against, bullied, or made to feel they are not wanted. Right now, the dozen or so known transgender children are privately being accommodated by school staff by allowing them to use faculty bathrooms. Why do you want to change the policy which would negatively affect 88,000 other students? Mr. Sawyer, I watched the video today of your last-minute orchestrated Facebook Town Hall meeting you conducted yesterday. You controlled the subject. It's right in line with all your other events. There was no one there to fact-check you, so your normal fashion of stretching the truth beyond recognition, you answered questions, and you answered questions put forward by your political allies. Of course, you lied about almost everything you talked about, especially the recall effort to remove you from office. For those of you who are here in the audience and watching on television, look at the Recall Sawyers fact sheet. Go to their website, www.recall sawyers.com, and go to the Facebook page. In all three places, I believe you will only see one mention of the nondiscrimination policy, and that's to get people to this meeting. When you see that, you'll realize Mr. Sawyers doesn't have an ounce integrity in his body.
Thank you, Mr. Petrack. Our next speaker is Tim Cox. Tim? We need order in the room. We will, I will, we will clear the room. I mean, I know that's not ideal, but we absolutely just need to have order within the room at all times. So, look, I'd prefer you be here, but we need to have order at all times. So, that's fine. Tim Cox is our next speaker. Caleb Dalton? Caleb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Caleb Dalton. My address is on file with the clerk. I reside in the Okaquan District. Opposing the change of Policy 60 as written is the right thing to do for multiple reasons. One of the primary reasons is that the current nondiscrimination policies were designed to address systemic, pervasive, and malicious discrimination based on irrelevant factors like skin color. As you well know, such policies were necessary to secure equal rights for all. The current issue, however, is different. Ms. Jesse, my representative, in a recent article you were quoted as saying that having separate restroom, locker rooms, and overnight accommodations based on biological sex reminded you of the racist, separate, but equal policies of the not-so-distant past. But recognizing biology is not bigotry, nor is it anything akin to racism. There were never good reasons to keep the races apart, but there are good reasons to separate intimate facilities based on biological reality. As an attorney, I understand that the guidance that this proposal offers is not binding and does nothing to guarantee the privacy and dignity of my daughters and others who find it immodest to be exposed to an undressed member of the opposite biological sex. We have to be honest. Changing the policy will impact the privacy of our children. Mr. Chairman, you now say that the intimate facility issue is a mere distraction, but the latest federal administration said it was about intimate facility use and overnight accommodations. The ACLU says it is, and even you yourself has said it is in the past. Playing games and being dishonest with what this policy does and what it does not do is not appropriate, and it does not serve any of us. This change will inevitably impact student privacy. And when it does, you cannot look a high school girl who has suffered sexual assault an estimated 1 in 4 have in the eye and tell her that her discomfort with a biological male in her intimate space is bigotry, or that she should just get over her trauma. I'm not saying that transgender individuals pose a greater threat to safety than any other individuals, but my daughter's right to privacy is not based on someone's identity. It's based on biology and anatomy, which does not change regardless of a student's struggle with gender dysphoria. This is a much more complicated matter than just adding a few words to a one-size-fits-all policy. Members of the board, if you are serious about enacting fairness policies that work for everyone, you will specifically detail out in the policy you propose what it actually does and does not do. Additionally, any wise legal counsel would tell you that the state of the law here is up in the air, especially since Prince William County is already a welcoming community, and there's no pressing reason to change the policy now. It would be wise to wait until the legal matters are resolved. Changing the policy now could expose the school district to liability from parties on both sides of this issue. It would be wise to leave it as is. I urge you to vote against the policy changes to 060. Thank you for your time and for your service on the board.
And our final speaker for this round of Citizens Time is John Deown. John?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a point of order. You said this is our final speaker for Citizen Comment Time, and we have quite a few speakers lined up. And last September, on the 21st, we did let all the speakers speak before we vote, and I'd like to call the point of order.
Well, the point of order, please, this is not, this is not an applause-line moment where the board is having discussion. The point of order is that policy says it's 30 minutes to begin, and then everyone else goes to the second session. That's been policy for a very long time. So that's, we're following policy on this one.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to appeal to the board, because we have made the exception before, and we did this last September 21st, when we took up the motion before voting.
I understand that. Hold on one second, Mrs., the motion hasn't been made yet. Hold on one second, we got to make sure we get this right. Ultimately, not appealing to the board, you'd be voting to suspend the rules to allow everyone, everyone to...
I'm appealing to the board, which means this is going before the board.
I'm just explaining what we're doing here. Policy and the rules allow for 30 minutes at the beginning and everyone else to the end. Policy also allows for it to be the sole discretion of the chairman to decide how many people move on, excuse me, how long, if we extend the first 30 minutes of Citizens Time. So if you'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, it would need to be a unanimous vote to suspend the rules, and therefore, the Roberts Rules of Order protect minorities when they have, in this case, I'm a minority of one, as we've discussed with parliamentary procedure before. So this is my, this is my sole authority, so it would be a unanimous vote to suspend the rules.
I appreciate that description. I'm on, in Roberts Rules of Orders right now. An appeal takes precedence over any question pending at the time. The chair makes a ruling from which the appeal is made. It yields to all privileged motions. There's nothing under an appeal that talks about suspension of the rules. And, you know, I'd like for this to go to a vote of the board, like for the board, excuse me, I'd like for the board to decide on what you just ruled. You said, "I ask for an appeal."
Again, let me just be perfect.
"I ask for the point of order," because you have said that we're going to be ending Citizen Comment Time, and then you made your statement of why we're ending it, and I ask for an appeal. That means it goes to the board, and the board gets to decide if we get to continue on or not.
No, I understand exactly what you're saying. Whoever, if we know who that was, they can be removed ultimately. Yeah.
And I believe this motion requires a second.
Hold on one second, Ms., I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page here. Ultimately, to explain this one more time, Roberts Rules of Order protects minorities of less than 1/3. In this particular case, it is the exclusive authority of the chairman by policy to determine if we extend Citizens Time. Therefore, I would have to give up my rights as a minority, as a minority of one, in order to extend Citizens Time. That is how it works. So therefore, you can appeal the decision of the chair. You can vote to suspend the rules, whichever way that you want to do it, but it would take a unanimous vote to do so. Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I already seconded.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I do want to say, in Roberts Rules, it says a majority or a tie vote sustains the decision of the chair. And that's number seven. It's on page, or it's under, it's under appeal.
That it doesn't, appeals to the chair don't circumvent the rights of the chair or any minority that it has less than 1/3. Roberts Rules of Order protects minorities of less than 1/3. So it absolutely does. This is no different when it comes to prior notice, when two members need notification and everything else. It has to be unanimous vote in order for the minority to chair. We covered this in our parliamentary training last meeting. They specifically covered this type of instance. I'm 100% sure of this decision. I know that minorities have rights when it comes to Roberts Rules of Order, and the minority essentially has to give up its rights in order to be overruled. Otherwise, it's not a minority that can be protected through Roberts Rules of Order. There's no point if the majority can take away the rights of the minority on a whim of less than 1/3.
Mr. Chairman, point of order is not debatable, and it does say in Roberts Rules of Order, "A majority or a tie vote sustains the decision of the chair on the principle that the chair's decision stands until reversed by a majority."
What you are asking me to...
"The sitting officer is a member of the Assembly. He can..." He can vote to create a tie and thus sustain his decision."
What you are asking to do is to suspend the rules, which we have, which is the policy.
No, I ask to appeal the point of order.
First of all, a point of order is just asking for clarification.
The point of order was, you gave your clarification. I'm appealing your decision.
But the decision, I have the sole right to that decision. This, you're basically, you're trying to suspend, either way you cut it, is to suspend the rules, whether it be appeal of the chair or that. So we can take a vote, there is no discussion on a suspension of the rules, which is what the rules allow me to have sole discretion over Citizens Time. Therefore, the vote is called. And so the vote on an appeal of, excuse me, on suspension of the rules, is, it is put in the, it is put in the affirmative of who wants to sustain the decision of the chair. So a yes vote would be agreeing with the chair, a no vote would be disagreeing with the chair and allowing Citizens Comment Time to continue. So therefore, those in favor of sustaining the decision of the chair when it comes to suspending the rules for Citizens Time, please vote yes by raising your right hand. Mr. Wilk, Ms. Jesse, Ms. Williams, and myself, those opposed? Mr. Deutsch, Ms. Ralston, Mr. Brand. Yeah, and we need to clear them out, sir. We need to clear them out. They need to be removed. We need, they need to be removed. We'll have a brief recess while they're removed. I'm sorry, real quick, so the four, four, four were Ms. Williams, myself, Ms. Jesse, and Mr. Wilk sustaining the ruling of the chair. Opposed to the ruling and suspending the rules was, was Ms. Satellite, Mr. Brand, Ms. Ralston, and Mr. Deutsch. One second. Okay. Mr. Dion, you have the floor. He can be removed as well. Thank you, thank you. You can, you can be removed. Thank you. Mr. Dion, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman and members of the school board, my name is John Dion. My wife, Lisa and I live in Gainesville. We have raised five children in Prince William County, all of whom have attended Prince William County public schools, one of whom will attend Patriot High School this fall. I am a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, which has congregations throughout Prince William County and neighboring counties, all of whom join with neighbors of all political and religious persuasions to build faith in God, help and care for one another, and to make for better communities. The LDS Church is one of six faith groups that have filed a joint Friend of the Court brief in Virginia's Gloucester County School Board case before the Supreme Court. In that amicus brief, the Church stated, "Gender as a divinely ordained characteristic is central to the doctrine and beliefs of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. The Bible records that God created human beings in His image. Male and female created He them. In 1995, the Church's apostolic leadership issued the Family of Proclamation to the World, which reaffirms the Church's longstanding doctrinal position on marriage, family, gender, and sexuality. It teaches, 'All human beings, male and female, are created in the image of God. Each is a beloved Spirit's son or daughter of heavenly parents, and as such, each has a divine nature and destiny.' The proclamation then underscores the profound religious significance of gender. Gender is an essential characteristic of individual pre-mortal, mortal, and eternal identity and purpose. Latter-day Saints believe that birth as a male or female carries spiritual meaning. Gender identity, in large measure, defines who we are, why we are here upon the earth, and what we are to do and become. From an LDS perspective, the unique combination of spiritual, physical, mental, and emotional capabilities of both males and females were needed to implement God's plan of happiness. Men and women are not interchangeable. A person's gender is to be embraced along with the complementary but distinct paths that God ordained for men and women. While gender is an essential and eternal attribute of personal identity, the Church acknowledges the reality of gender dysphoria and related conditions. They impose heavy burdens, and those who bear them deserve compassion and respect. The Church welcomes efforts by responsible officials to seek mutually respectful solutions that reasonably accommodate transgender concerns while fully preserving religious liberty.'" In response to this brief, the Church provided the following to media who inquired. "There have been a growing discussion related to access to public restrooms, school locker rooms, and similar facilities. The Church offers the following principles that are consistent with its teachings and values. One, we believe that everyone is entitled to respect. Two, all people should expect an environment of safety, dignity, and privacy in settings such as restrooms, locker rooms, changing areas, et cetera. And three, we believe reasonable solutions can usually be found when people of goodwill come together to find answers. We encourage public officials to create and administer laws and regulations..."
Thank you, sir.
"...that properly balance these..."
All right, we are moving on to item 16.01, which is the revision of Policy 060, nondiscrimination and commitment to equity. I will make the motion that the Prince William County School Board adopt the changes to the nondiscrimination policy, Policy 060, by adding sexual orientation and gender identity. In doing so, the Prince William County School Board gives guidance to the superintendent that he is not to change the current regulations and practices regarding bathroom and locker room use. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I'd like to second.
Thank you. That opens discussion. In order to kind of keep this orderly, if the board doesn't mind, we can, we can put a little bit of a time limit on each person to be able to talk, to make sure it's even, if that, or you just want to kind of roll through it. Okay. Mr. Wilk, we'll start, we'll start down on your end with Mr. Wilk.
Okay, thank you all very much. So, as I've communicated with all my constituents, whether they're for or against this issue, all my constituents need to hear their voice, and I do want to respect people on both sides of this issue for having civil conversations with me over emails, over phone calls. I've had multiple, multiple, multiple meetings and phone calls with constituents from all walks of life. This morning, I had a talk with a priest in the parish in Mount Vernon. A couple weeks ago, I had a meeting with a Baptist minister in Okaquan. Last weekend, I met with four Muslim leaders at the Darul Nur Mosque. This is a very important issue, and not listening to all sides and all viewpoints of this would be negligent and something that I would not deem responsible of an elected official. As I was going through this process in the fall of last year, this past year, excuse me, I wanted to understand the major concerns of this topic. Overall, looking at this topic, it came down to, in my opinion, the issue of safety, people taking advantage of the changes, and privacy issues. Now, I can't speak for the other board members, but I took it upon myself to do my own research on this topic, and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to talk about this right now, and I will try to be brief. Mr. Iman? So if we look at the nondiscrimination policies across the United States, I looked at, keep going, I'm sorry, Mr. Iman, or do I look like a... Oh, sorry. Okay, so what you see up there, and I do have in a full Excel spreadsheet, is these are the top 42 largest districts in the United States. I talked to all of them, all of them, and their contact information is up there. So I bid any of you who disbelieve me, have fun navigating through bureaucratic school systems. You think our school system has a large administration team? Talk to New York City Public Schools. So, that's the chart. The yellow represents, and I'm absolutely transparent about this, the yellow ones, and you'll see in a second, they'll get bigger, the yellow ones represent school systems in the United States that do not have gender identity or sexuality in their nondiscrimination clause. The white ones are districts who do have both gender identity and sexuality in their nondiscrimination clause. And then the purple ones represent school districts who only have sexuality and not gender identity in their clause. To be completely transparent, with the amount of time, I only called the districts that were looking at adopting both words and spoke to the districts who have both words adopted in the language. So, summary, as I mentioned, 26 of the largest school systems in our country, out of the 42, have both terms. Five have only sexuality. 10 have sexuality and gender identity. One, which adds to 42, is us, Prince William County, where we're making that decision tonight. Out of the 26 districts I talked to with gender identity and sexuality outlined, these are the types of people I talked to. One, Director of Counselor. Five, Director of Education Equity. Board Attorney, Legal Counsel, Assistant Board Attorneys, nine of them. Director of Diversity, two of them. ADA Compliance Officer, one. Civil Rights Specialist, one. One Board Member, one Deputy Student Rights, two, excuse me, two Communications Officers, one Chief of Staff, and one Superintendent of Student Services. Ladies and gentlemen, if you think these are short conversations, I again ask you to have these phone calls. Working a full-time job and also having the full-time job, it seems like as a school board member, finding time to have these calls was very important to me, and I made sure I gave each of them the amount of time that they wanted to talk to me on this. As a result of the language and the fears that I'm seeing and hearing from my constituents about this, as we're hearing tonight, I asked my school districts and the people I spoke to, "How many transgender students have attacked or have been attacked in the bathroom since you have adopted this language?" I also asked, although the people I spoke to thought this was absurd, but I said, "This is fair, this is what my constituents are asking." "How many heterosexual males are dressing up as females to enter the restrooms and attack them?" Starting, New York Department of Education, 1.1 million students, zero transgender attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Los Angeles School System, zero transgender attacks, zero boys dressed up as girls. Chicago Public Schools, 400,000 students, zero transgender attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls.
Mr. Wilk has the floor and the right to speak, please.
Miami Dade Schools, home of the Dolphins, 345,000 students, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Clark County, home of what's happened in Vegas, stays in Vegas, zero transgender attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Broward County Schools, zero transgender attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Houston, Texas, home of the red state of Texas, 215,000 students, zero transgender attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Hillsboro, Florida, 205,000 students, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. I want to add something here. Our policy, again, explicitly says this is not changing our bathroom and locker room policy. Majority of these districts have transgender bathrooms, and they are still experiencing zero, zero across the board. The ones who don't, unlike the lawyers who've already said that they are not going to be able to do that, incorrect. They should talk to Dallas, Longview, Texas, who have individual policies and do not have transgender bathrooms and have these words in their language. So I would encourage them to talk to other districts. Orange County, Hawaii, this was fun, tried talking to a district six hours behind your time. We finally spoke at 8:00 at night for over an hour. The entire state of Hawaii, interestingly enough, has one school district. It's run by the Hawaii Department of Education. Zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Fairfax County Schools, 188,000 students, zero transgender attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Palm Beach Schools, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Gwinnett County does not have gender identity or sexuality. Again, I'm being fair and going down the list and giving you all the information. Dallas, Texas, another, they say a blue dot in a red state, that's what they describe themselves, 160,000 students, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Whew, sorry, Mr. Torres. Wake County, North Carolina, does not have either in their policy. Montgomery County Schools only has sexuality. In Maryland, Shelby County, home of Memphis and Graceland, only gender identity, sexuality. Charlotte Meck, only gender, gender identity and sexually not included. Philadelphia Freedom, 131,000 kids, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. San Diego, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Duval, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Prince George's County, Maryland, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Fairfax, Cypress Fairbanks Schools does not have gender identity or sexuality. Cobb, Georgia, does not have either. Baltimore County Schools, to our north, zero, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Pinellas County, only sexuality in it. San Antonio Schools does not include gender identity or sexuality. Jefferson County, which is home of Louisville, Kentucky, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. DeKalb, Georgia, gender identity, sexuality not protected. Polk, neither as well. Fulton, neither as well. Albuquerque Schools, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. We're almost done. Lee, only sexuality. Denver, Denver made a point in telling me, "We have had this language in our school system since 2008." Zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Jefferson County, not to be confused with Kentucky, this is outside of Denver, 87,000, zero trans, zero boys dressing as girls. Austin, only sexuality included. Baltimore City Schools, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. Fort Worth, Texas, one of the districts that does not have transgender bathrooms, has both in the policy, have not been sued to have bathrooms incorporated. Zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls. It's site-based, like ours says. Davidson County, home of Nashville, Tennessee, zero trans, zero boys dressing up as girls. Long Beach, California, zero trans, zero boys dressing up as girls. Ladies and gentlemen, the red representing, because, being fair with colors, I don't want to say, this is not all Republicans for or against, all Democrats for or against. I've seen both sides on both spectrums of this. But using the red, the red is the schools that have both, yellow are not, and purple are only one of the languages. And that is that. Altogether, out of the schools that have transgender and sexuality in the top school systems, 3.6 million kids, zero trans attacks, zero boys dressing up as girls.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Mr. Wilk still has the floor? Mr. Wilk?
The general themes we heard from the school districts that I talked to, students very accepting of these policies, individual differences recognized in our student populations. We are a world-class education system to attract 21st century jobs and businesses by having our updated nondiscrimination policy. Accommodations made for all students. This is about civil rights, not our personal beliefs. The language provides that extra protection that extends students federally. I do want to recognize and thank and credit our school-based administrators for handling site-based issues on a one-by-one case. I want this to continue, but I think it's time that we give them support in the regulation to validate their job and that they're doing the needs to meet all students, to treat them with respect and dignity. Our administrators are dealing with these issues every day, and this language needs to codify the work that they're doing to protect these students. I will admit, as I punted this issue in the fall and wanted more time to look into it, as I hope evidence I have looked into this, this issue has become a political hot issue, and unfortunately, it's become about political talking points and partisan bickering. At the end of the day, I think we need to do right by all students in our school system. Again, this has been a very deep issue for me, something that I've had to really, really dig deep in. I want to show something real quick, I'm going to go with it. For those people who, who think that I'm doing this blindly as a partisan, or that I'm doing this because I'm following the orders of Chairman Sawyers, for those people who don't know me, this is, or was, my brother-in-law, Scott. He's holding my first son, Dominic, who ironically looks just like him. Scott is dead. Scott was gay. Now, he did not die because he was gay. He was not attacked because he was gay, which caused him to die. My memories and what I remember with Scott, and all the time, we had very, very heated disagreements. For many, many years, growing up the way I did, I fought strongly in my faith on an issue like, for example, marriage, in my belief in marriage and sacrament between a man and a woman. I would get in heated arguments with my brother-in-law to a point where I wasn't even invited to his wedding. I realized that we have so many different beliefs out there, and what we believe and how we involve is a big issue. It's something we have to dive deep in. I think we're allowed to be entitled to our beliefs and what we have, but when these beliefs infringe on rights of others, that's when it crosses the line. Scott grew up in Franklin County, Virginia, openly gay. Now, this was 20 years ago, and I know things have changed, but I still remember stories that Scott used to tell of what it was like to be openly gay down in southwest Virginia. He tells me of teachers who didn't know how to handle this situation, and I don't fault them. He had a PE teacher, a PE teacher who thought it was best to let Scott get out of class and stay in his car... his car, so he didn't get teased in gym class. Again, I don't, I can't, 20 years ago, truly fault the teacher he didn't know. But what I will say, as a teacher myself and as someone who leads and is part of this school system, as a teacher, I saw it. I did see it. I think we need to do right by these kids and update the nondiscrimination policy as outlined in Policy 060. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Anyone who would like to be next? Is there someone who'd like to speak next? Let me just go down, Miss Jessie.
It's very difficult to follow that. Justin, I want to commend you for your research, your in-depth research, and your sharing of that personal moment. This is a very difficult situation. As Justin say, you grow up in households, and in my community, we didn't say bad things about gays, or we call them gays or queers. We just made fun of them. You know, and I'm sure you still have families, and I have friends who do it now, where you make fun of a person. You know, I remember everyone would say, "Oh, certain singers, oh, he has a little sugar in his pocket." There are all those kinds of phrases. And so overcoming this has been challenging for me personally. When it comes to safety for kids, I think everybody knows where I stand. I'm never going to do anything to jeopardize the safety of anybody's children. You know, the only reason, one of the reasons I fought for the bathrooms outside, I just think it's unsafe. No, nothing has happened, but it's an unsafe situation when you have children go into a bathroom outside, and I will continue to fight for that. But tonight, I received an email today, and I called the individual, and I asked if I could read this email. It's very personal, and I asked, "Should I read it? Can I read it? Do I have your permission? Should I use your name?" And he said, "Yes." So this memo, this email came from our technology person, who usually sits in this seat here, Mr. Howard Pond. We've talked about children, but we haven't talked about adults, and so he writes this. "Not long ago, I asked board members, and more importantly, my buddy Allison, exactly what recourse I would have to protect my employment here with Prince William County Schools. Should I be fired simply because a direct supervisor does not like gay people? This is just what, this is just a scenario. My actual supervisor is awesome, total rock star. Let's just pretend I get a new supervisor and they begin harassing me based on my sexual orientation. I recall the answer being, when he talked to her, it would never happen." And then we got sidetracked on another discussion, so let's all visit this now. What would be my recourse officially should it occur? You should note that a couple of years ago, my partner was called a fairy by Prince William County administrators because he was wearing pink, and said administrator was also doing the loose wrists wrists scenario, mocking my partner. My partner complained to the supervisor at the time and was told he shouldn't wear pink. So to pretend there was not, there's not anti-gay people in positions of power that need to be placed in check by a policy that protects LGBTQ staff and students is silly. The policy is not about bathrooms. I'm not reading it in its entirety. Protecting through, this policy is not about bathroom, it's about ensuring that we are protecting through policy vulnerable minorities. To boil my civil rights down to freaking out that we will have some mass tidal wave of transgender students invading a bathroom is silly, and for me, it's offensive. And this is the part of the email that was just, I couldn't speak, I couldn't, I couldn't think after reading it. Another experience in Prince William County I had as a youngster that was very traumatic. I shared this detail only with Allison and Lilly, but I've shortened it here for all. In middle school and living down in Montclair, I had a buddy, best buddy, who was gay and out. His older brother and his older brother's group of friends would ride ATVs through the trails, and me and my best friend would build tree forts or rope swings, totally the Stone Age by today's standards. My friend's older brother and his group of older friends rode up to us quickly and began calling me a faggot. They knew both of us were gay. My friend was spared because his older brother was in this particular group, however, whereas I wasn't so lucky. Then I got hit in the face so hard, I almost passed out and probably had a concussion in hindsight. They beat me and beat me and beat me while calling me a faggot and spitting on me laying in the mud on the trail. Then they stood me up, bound my hands and ankles, attached me to the back of an ATV, and drug me through the trails. All of that climax, being, all of that climax would be in drug out of the trail at the corner of Mendeville Road and 234, tying me to a tree, and, and, and doing target practice above my head with a bow and arrow. The details are grossly undersold, but the point is people like that seldom let go of that level of hatred. And if any, as if any of them out there in the positions, and if any of them are out there in positions of power, I'm confident folks like me wouldn't fare so well in the employment space. If any of them became teachers, I doubt a gay student would get a fair shake either. This is one thing policy can help with, and that's putting protection in places, in a place that have consequences if violated. One might be homophobic or racist, but they're likely to check themselves in order, not to jeopardize their own employment status. My husband has worked in this area, and he used to say to me frequently, "We don't ask a person to change from being a racist. We don't ask a person to change from being a homophobic. We just ask that you don't demonstrate it at work." I plan to vote for this policy change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Like to go? Anyone? Mr. Brandt, do you want to go? Mr. Brandt?
All right, I guess I'll go first from the other side. First of all, I think this is one of those topics where it's very easy to make assumptions. And those of you, you know, out in the audience, you're looking at a few of us up here, and you probably have a good idea how we'll probably vote in the end. So you're making assumptions based on who you think we are as people, and our backgrounds, and where we've been, and what we've done. First of all, I want to appreciate everyone for coming tonight. I really don't care where you fall on this topic, if you feel like the policy should be changed, or if you feel like the policy shouldn't be changed. I appreciate you all coming here tonight and being willing to speak your mind on this topic. I think you all have valuable points to say. I listen to every speaker, I read every email. I appreciate all your concerns, all your comments, whether you fall on the left, or whether you fall on the right, or whether you fall somewhere in the middle. First of all, personally, this is not as easy as some of you probably assume for me. Mr. Wilk and I have talked about this. I've had the opportunity to teach kids of all backgrounds, kids of all faiths, kids of all cultures, kids of all religions, and of course, kids of all sexuality, and I adored all of them. And of course, like, you know, I was, I had the benefit of teaching the CFPA, Webber's High School, a lot of fine arts kids, awesome kids, very creative, very funny, very humorous, very talented. And some of those students were straight, and some of those students happened to be gay. And I loved them all, taught them all to the best of my ability, didn't matter what they were. Faith-wise, I've been one of those people where, you know, I'm going to steal the line from you two who performed in the area last night, probably still haven't found what I'm looking for in that topic. Growing up Southern Baptist, you can imagine my background was very conservative, very, very conservative. But for most of the last 13 or 14 years, I've spent a lot of time in the Episcopal Church. And during that time in the Episcopal Church, you notice they've had some issues with this topic at a national level, and you'll, you'll know that probably definitely lean more into the left than the right when it comes to this topic. So I've had the opportunity to share views with folks that are the same sex, that are couples that are raising kids together, and I've had the opportunity to have conversations with those folks. And last but not least, you know, I've had bosses in my professional life that, you know, happened to fall, happened to be gay. In fact, one of the best bosses I've ever had in my lifetime was a lesbian woman. Loved working for her, would gladly work for her again. So I guess that's my little preface, just to kind of start things off, is that when it comes to this topic, it, I don't think it's really a Republican topic, or a Democrat topic, a left-wing topic, or a right-wing topic. I think it's a topic where, unfortunately, and I think I said this back in the fall when I first got on this board, I feel like we definitely could do a better job at finding some common middle ground. Transitioning to some other thoughts on this topic, a couple speakers at the last meeting brought up that we had not done our due diligence on this topic. And that's, that's the thing that kind of keeps sticking with me with this, with this topic. Back in the fall, I definitely, I think it was my first board meeting back in October, I was definitely supportive of the idea of a task force. So we had, we put Dr. Walt and his staff to work. They went out and they, they came back to us in January with a framework of a potential task force to study this topic a little bit more. Nothing happened after that point. And of course, a lot of people came here in January, and there were some folks that had some opposition to this topic, they voiced concerns about the topic, the fact that we were bringing it back up. But I feel like that topic was never fully explored, excuse me, explored, it should have been explored and developed a lot more. I reached out to Dr. Waltz last week, and, you know, eventually I'm going to roll off this. My time is temporary, probably am down to my last three or four meetings, give or take. Wonder if Mr. Trenum will officially find out that he's coming back. And I offered to him, you know, if this task force is still a possibility, I would love the opportunity to be a co-chair of it in a bipartisan fashion. I don't think that topic, that idea is going to fly. I think there's probably some people here that want to get this topic done tonight, but I just want you to know that I made that offer, that I feel like I can see things from different sides. I have different points of view on different topics, and no matter how I vote tonight, I think we could have done a better job when it comes to studying this issue and looking at all factors involved. Some other topics, let's see. I'm a little concerned about other policies and regulations that, if we pass this tonight, affects. Again, it may be minor, we don't know, but in terms of the ramifications of another 15, 16, 17, 18 policies and regulations, this will affect, I don't know if we've studied that enough. So I do have some concerns about that. I'm not sure if we've done enough to get community input, and, you know, I think tonight's a good example where, again, I appreciate all your wonderful emails. I did not reply to every single one of them because there was no way possible to keep up with the, the amount of email that all of you were sending from both sides. But I think, other than the board meetings in September, and the last two that we've had at the end of the school year, again, this is where I kind of come back to maybe there's something more we could have done when it comes to getting some, some community feedback. I'm also concerned about the legal ramifications. I think a lot of us in here, all of us are taxpayers, a lot of us live in Prince William County. I'm worried about the implications of passing a policy tonight when it comes to the potential lawsuits that are going to follow. They will come, and there will be ramifications in terms of the budget when it comes to that. I think those are things we need to consider. Some other things. Process was a big topic last year when it came to the seat that I'm sitting in. So as you know, Mr. Trenum had some thoughts in terms of how he thought the seat should be filled. There were some folks up here that disagreed with that and said they did not agree with the process, specifically one individual in particular. So, again, if we're going to use the process argument for one thing, I think it's okay to use it in other ways as well. So when it comes to the process of getting this policy on this agenda tonight and potentially passing it, I don't think we've done our due diligence when it comes to coming to a fair decision on that. Again, I, I want to point out that as a person of faith, I do have concerns about the students, the teachers and administrators who are not vocal, who, who are vocal in their beliefs on this topic, I want to make sure that they're protected as well. I know we heard from the ACLU on this topic, they definitely had a lot of opinions in terms of how this, you know, would affect a certain groups of students. I want to make sure we hear from them as well on how it will affect students of faith. I want to make sure that they give us some guidance on that. Also, I'm a little bit frustrated, and I guess you could say disgusted, that not everybody got an Personally, I believe that, again, if you sign up to speak, it does not matter your viewpoint on this topic, whether you fall in one direction of making policy changes or not making policy changes, I believe we should have replicated what we did in September, and I think every single person who signed up to speak should have had an opportunity to speak at one time. I'm a little frustrated that four of my board members did not agree with that point of view as well. In closing, and I'm getting close to the end here, first and foremost, I represent a district in Prince William County Schools. And the vast majority of the constituents in my district, the principal district, who contacted me on this policy change, definitely did not support any changes to the policy, or they wanted us to do our due diligence and homework before we made any changes in order to do it right. In closing, the topic tonight has brought a lot of you here tonight, and again, I appreciate that, whatever way you fall on this topic. But I encourage you in 2017, 2018, I'm switching topics here, please don't be one-trick ponies. There's a lot of fact, there's a lot of things that affect this school system on a daily basis, and I would encourage you, and I would appreciate, and I think all these board members would as well, that come to more board meetings, be passionate about other topics, because there's more than just this one policy that affects our students, and that's all students. So again, we look forward to seeing you in the fall, come as often as possible, we want to hear your voices on a plethora of topics. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Bran. Ms. Williams.
I first want to start by clearing up something that Mr. Bran just said, I absolutely do care and want to hear from everyone, I've never, ever, ever, ever said otherwise. Even people who know me know that, like, I have problems shutting up, because I'll continue to talk to people, whether I agree with them or not, on a personal level. What I did feel was important was that we do the business of the board, and do like we've done in every other meeting, which is, sometimes we allow everybody to speak, sometimes we don't, and that's so that we can get the work done. I appreciate what everyone has to say, and whether I agree with you, or I don't agree with you, does not mean in any way, shape, or form, now until I leave this planet, that your voice or your opinion is not important, or should not be respected. I don't have to agree with you to respect you, period, ever, and I will always be that way. Now into this policy decision. When this was first brought up, I abstained, because personally, I was in such shock, I could not understand why we needed a task force for something that our nation's government had already put into place, Fortune 500 companies had already put into place, my own employer, and everyone else that I associated with. Doesn't mean it's everywhere, because it's not, but I was a little, I was, to say a little shocked would be an understatement. As a person who has never had a true home, because I'm not just black, or I'm not just white, I am of mixed race, of mixed background, I am the only one on this board who grew up here and went through Prince William County Schools. I absolutely hate crying, so I'm trying to get through this without, because this has been very emotional and very personal to me. I've been in hallways. I have had friends who didn't make it through school, because they were teased relentlessly. I am a person who walked every group, because I didn't have a group. So I walked with LGBTQ students before it was cool to be an LGBTQ student, before you had a flag in school, before you could even think to bring a flag with you to school. I defended one of my best friends, who I didn't even, who told me to my face he was not gay, defended him furtively against other people, just because he said he was not gay, later decided to come out when he felt safe in college. For me, that's not about whether you're gay, you're lesbian, you're transsexual, you're queer, you're heterosexual, you're black, you're white, you're Muslim, you're Christian, it doesn't matter, and it shouldn't matter to anybody who sits in this seat because you took an oath of public office, period. That's what matters. When you sit up in the seat, and you choose, because you make a decision to be a public official, it is your absolute duty to represent your constituent body, which is everybody. I have a person of faith, when I sit up here, I bring my faith with me everywhere I go, but when I make a decision, my faith cannot trump my decision. Because if I do that, I'm doing a disservice to the people who elected me to sit here. I could quote scripture either way, I could cherry pick pieces of policy to go on either side of this issue. Absolutely, everyone up here can. What I do know is absolutely what it feels like to not be protected, to not have a home, to not have a voice, to not feel represented. I know that when I sit in the seat, it's my job to protect 89,000 students and our staff. Because in 2017, it's not just about our students, it's about our staff too, because it's supposed to be, very carefully, here's the word everybody misses, "and." There's no exclusion, when you add someone to a non-discrimination policy, you're not excluding someone else. The whole point is "and." You have these policies because these people are not protected, and they are vulnerable populations of our, of our, of our society. That's the reason why you have non-discrimination policies. If everybody, "and" that word, if we were all-inclusive of everybody, we wouldn't have this discussion. It's very simple. Everyone can come, and people can give me newspaper articles about adult males going to bathrooms at Target, people can give me articles about, never, as Mr. Wilk finally demonstrated, and for the once, I'm so sad you're not a teacher, because my goodness, that was great tonight. I enjoy having you aboard as a board member, despite our back and forth, but yeah, tonight I was like, man, the students are missing out, that was thorough. It's just, it's simply a matter of just common decency. We want, we say, all year long, we can't attract a quality staff because we don't pay them, or we don't hire them at a certain time, or we don't do this, or we don't do that. Do you think, honestly, that in 2017, millennials who read everything, yes, they do actually, it may not be in a book, but it could be electronic, they read, they check these things, this is important. That's an important part of being an employer, and we are the second-largest employer in Prince William County. It's not just about students. And for the parents who are worried about bathroom usage, I would absolutely be worried too. I have a 16-year-old, as a matter of fact, I have a child that hasn't started school yet, that's going to be entering into this world, into these, dealing with these policies and everything else by the time he gets to school, I mean, it's going to be a couple of years, and I have to think about him. I am a female, I am absolutely, for those who don't know, which is pretty much everybody up until tonight, I'm also a sexual assault survivor. Didn't happen in a bathroom, but it absolutely happened with somebody I absolutely knew in a very trusted environment, which most cases of sexual assault absolutely occur that way. And if you don't know, I would encourage you to go read about it, please. Because as one, it was very, very hard to sit here and hear that sexual assault only occurs in bathrooms, and that I'm putting little girls in jeopardy. Being one, and having been a little girl when it occurred, I really found offense to that. And even if that hadn't happened, I took time as a college student, because I went to school for interdisciplinary studies, which means I studied a little bit about everything. Then to top it all off, I specialized in conflict resolution and peace studies, which means I had to go back and learn a lot about everything, because that means I have to be able to talk to everybody, whether I like them, I don't like them, they smell, they smell good, it doesn't matter. When you do conflict resolution, doesn't matter who sits on that table, what matters is you find a resolution to their problem, period. And that's my job, that's what we do up here. We're supposed to be in the middle ground. And I've sat up here all year long and listened to politics, and been accused of being political this way or that way, most people who know me, once again, know that I am a horrible politician, I've said that time and time again. I always say things that irritate people, because I speak from the truth that I know. It doesn't matter to me whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, what matters to me, especially in this case, is are you safe? Do you feel safe? And when we do this policy, I absolutely listen to everyone talk to me about restrooms. And then I had to stop and think, even if we didn't pass this, the Virginia High School League, which is the controlling body for sports, has had this policy for non-discrimination, and, "and," that word I love again, for transgender students, which is the one thing that everyone seems to get caught up on in this policy, which is not the entire policy, but they already have had systems in place since, I think, 2014. I want to know why no one objected then. I want to know why there was no object until it became political. This is not political, this is people's lives, absolutely. We're talking about a class of people that has the highest risk of suicide. If you're worried about bathrooms, give me a policy you're going to be happy about, we can discuss that. This is not the end-all, be-all of everything. This is what makes public space great, is that we can take public comment and make changes all the time. This is a non-discrimination policy, absolutely, it affects and goes upon the fringes of everything else that we do, of course it does. Nobody's saying it doesn't. What I'm saying, for me personally, when I respond to my constituent base and said this is not a bathroom policy, I'm saying to you, I absolutely recognize your concern, your fear, but a non-discrimination is not about going to the bathroom. A lot of this started because the former president's administration decided to release a memorandum from the Department of Education on transgender bathroom usage, the same time we decided to talk about non-discrimination policy, and then people ran with it. There's this great thing about reading, when you read a lot about everything, you can make your own determination about things, but you can also separate the issues that we're talking about. And that's a big deal when it comes to this. Everybody's safety, everybody's safety is important. And to tie it all home, that's why we have a code of behavior. In there, it very specifically states that you are free to practice your religious beliefs, that's not being infringed upon in this policy. We're not changing the code of behavior at all, in any way, shape, or form. Matter of fact, when I was in school, and I know this hasn't changed, because I still read it now as a parent, as a parent or legal guardian of a student, or as a student of this school system, at any point in time, you feel you are not being able to do something, or your rights or freedoms, or whatever it is, are being infringed upon, you have a right to take that up with your administrator. What makes this policy so different and so important to that very statement, is it backs it up for everyone who's not covered right now. It does not take away in any way, shape, or form from anybody else. When we do something to protect someone else, it doesn't mean removal for someone else, it means "and." And as a person who lives in "and," because I don't have one or the other, it's always "and," every day, every day, "and." I would implore our public body to be more inclusive of that word "and," because it's very important. Nobody is any more special, or any less special, than anybody else. I don't want to get into the statistics of crime and all of those things, but I would encourage everyone to educate yourself, because the biggest driving factor is always fear, and it's fear of the unknown. I know I took the time out to educate myself on the things that I didn't know about, especially when it came to transgender. I feel blessed in the fact that I actually had the opportunity to not only belong to a group that had someone go through a transgender experience, that started as a child and ended as an adult, so I was able to personally speak to people. I don't know everything there is to know about being in the LGBTQ community, I don't know everything there is to know about being Muslim or anything else. That's why we listen. But it does mean that I have no right to take my fears and put them on somebody else because I don't understand something, ever. I'm going to support, I'm going to support this policy, and I want to be very clear when I say that I'm supporting this policy as an "and," it is not a trampling of anybody else's rights. I absolutely respect every single one of my board members and anybody here who disagrees with me, because that is my duty to do so. And before I stop talking, I just want to remind my fellow public officials of that oath you took, when you placed your hand on the Bible and swore to be a public official for everybody, because that is our job. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Please, we need to, we need to keep debate, we are in the middle of debate, please, thank you. Ms. Ralston has to be recognized next, Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please sit down, you have stood a long time. Sit, you may sit, sit, everything is fine. Okay, well, stand up there. You, thanks for coming out, and let me thank everybody who called me that I actually talked to. I appreciate that, I thought it was interesting. Everybody's conversation was a little bit different from the other. And there's a person standing up, and I wish she would sit down too, maybe everybody else would, came to me a year ago, and we talked. And I told her, don't worry, there we go, see, sitting is okay. When, I guess for as long as I can remember, there has been someone that was gay in my family. And for as long as I can remember, they all died of AIDS. So way long time ago, I was really busy with taking care of people. And it was very interesting because of some of the friends that they had that I met. Now, California's an interesting place, and I always talk about it, only because generally, we don't try to tell others what to do with their life. We believe that your life is truly yours, and just have a happy time with it. And as I listened this past week, I had, I wonder where some people come from, because what Lori was saying is, is true. When you are of a class, I'm of a protective class, I'm African-American and female, and had it not been for all those things, I wouldn't be sitting here today, neither would Lily or Lori, we wouldn't be sitting here, because the discrimination and what we would be allowed to do would be less. And so what did that mean? It meant I was less than, less than, someone else, anybody, just less than. And as I've listened, there's not much more to say, but I do thank everyone for their comments. I did not grow up in a environment of lots and lots of bigotry, no, but I did get to experience it a couple of times, when people tried to hurt me with glass, by throwing glass at me. And just for your information, I went to a Catholic school, and it was after school, and finally, the police had to take me home every day. But it didn't stop how I felt about human beings, and about people. If you don't know somebody, walk up to them and shake their hand and get to know them. They're not going to bite you. And guess what, this does not rub off. What can I tell you? So last year, I asked the chairman and this board to put this item over for another year, and they did. And now is the time, it's the come-to-Jesus time now. Because whenever we say here, and however I vote, it's my vote, it's mine, and you can get angry, you could get happy, whatever, but it's mine, and only I have to stand for it. And you can vote for me the next time, or not vote for me the next time, none of that matters either to me. It doesn't matter. So I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but you really like standing. So let me just say that my love for all of you, irrespective of who you are, what you are, and how you see yourself, that's okay, because I love you just the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Satterwhite. Ms. Satterwhite, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to start off by saying, Lily, I didn't know you were going to read that email, and I had responded to him today, and we traded some emails back and forth, and I cried when I first read it, I cried when he first told me the story, and it got me going again today. Howard is a dear friend, and it hurts for me what he has been through. I was saying to someone yesterday that I'd spent well over 60 hours preparing for this meeting, and then I realized yesterday that I'd spent well over 30 hours just working in the past two days, and that doesn't count today. There's an abundance of material to read, learn, and study while considering a policy change involving a non-discrimination statement and adding sexual orientation and gender identity, and I think Mr. Wilks did a good job of showing all the work that he's done with this. I'm going to start with Prince William County Schools' policy and regulations. Regulation 140-1, Section 1, states that each proposal must be accompanied by a completed policy regulation justification form, Attachment 1, it's attached to the policy. This justification form was never provided by Chairman Sawyers in September 2016, and was again not provided for this June 21st meeting. This form is not only for the board, but also for, quote, "staff analysis of the proposed addition or changes in terms of the following: legal implications, educational benefits, impact on the administration of the school division, immediate and future changes, and number of assignments of personnel, immediate and future budgetary impact." The form is signed by Division Counsel after review. None of this happened because there was no justification form. Section 140-1, Section 4, states, "The board may, by majority vote, waive the normal process and take what affaire action it sees fit." This board has not voted to waive the justification form, so we still don't have it. Speaking regulations, I'd like to know why we're considering such a controversial policy change without any accompanying regulations to reflect the change. It's like saying we're going to pass the healthcare bill and then find out what's in it, well, we kind of know that didn't work too well. It's irresponsible to pass... Okay, that was a joke, okay, it was a joke. It is irresponsible to pass this policy without any definitions, without any consideration of the impacts on the school division, or any explanation available to all of our constituents of what this will entail. An Inside Nova article yesterday, quote, "Sawyers hopes that the task force the board previously discussed could study the policy change and address those questions. The board took the initial step of creating a steering committee to form the task force, but Sawyers notes that Satterwhite and several of the board members opposed any work to assemble the group and start studying the issue as recently as late January." That's a quote from an Inside Nova article. The fact is, this board did hear from the superintendent's work group with details on how the task force could be set up. This board never directed the superintendent by any motion or vote to put the task force into action. I have to point out that according to Policy 131, the chairman or vice chairman have complete control over what goes on our meeting agenda. Mr. Chairman, if you'd really wanted the task force to consider this policy change, you could have brought forward a motion or voted any meeting and activated the task force, and you didn't do this. I have to wonder why. And Mr. Chairman, just to re- And, Mr. Chairman, just to refresh your memory, I originally suggested the task force in one of my prepared speeches on September 7th, 2016. The National School Board Association has a really good 23-page document entitled “Transgender Students in Schools: Frequently Asked Questions and Answers for Public School Boards and Staff.” This was originally published in 2016, and it was updated in May of 2017 with information on current court cases. On page 5, it says, “Schools must implement policies that prevent transgender students from being bullied and harassed, and they must address accusations of such bullying and harassment promptly.” It goes on to say, “In this shifting legal landscape, your goal and challenge, this is addressing school board members, as public leaders remains clear, to provide educational access and to maintain safe learning environments for all, including transgender students. School board members have an opportunity to lead through your policymaking function. You should engage your communities, engage your communities regarding the most effective policies and procedures that will ensure equal access to education while reflecting community concerns and values. Public schools belong to all, and policy decisions about important issues should be made only after the appropriate involvement of all of those affected by the decision and with due consideration for the rights of those holding dissenting views, seeking to reconcile sometimes deeply conflicting community views and legal imperatives on these issues.” It goes on to say, “There are no quick and easy answers to these questions. While social change can be painful and challenging, it can also be a process of enrichment and growth, especially when school leaders engage and guide communities in conversations that respect disparate beliefs and opinions. A key tenet to understanding this guide, the guide I was discussing, is the belief that all children have a right to learn, and they deserve public schools free from discrimination and harassment.” This board, this board, in my opinion, has not shown through word or actions that it’s concerned about the voice of all in our community or about the disparate beliefs or opinions because we have not involved the community members. We’ve insulted community members. We’ve walked, some people have walked out when students with differing opinions were speaking. Others have tried to make this all about political party. Here’s a quote from last September in an email entitled, “PWC Black Pastors Oppose School Board Gender Identity Revision.” It says, “Our churches are politically diverse conversations in eastern Prince William County and represent Democrats, Republicans, and Independents. It would be wrong for the Prince William County School Board to ignore the will of its people by making this change while so many citizen concerns exist within our community. We believe that every person is created in the image of God and deserving of respect and compassion. We unequivocally denounce all violence and bullying against LGBTQ people, but this revision will result in the discrimination against the majority of our children. To deny basic privacy to our students is the suppression of their rights. Like you, we want to make sure our children can learn absent a hostile environment such as bullying. For that reason, as parents and pastors, we are grateful for your anti-bullying policies as they stand because they promote decency and order.” So this isn’t about political party. As Mr. Brand said, this isn’t about hate or bigotry. We all have our own stories. Talk to us, as Diana said, talk to us. Shake hands with us, we’ll share. This isn’t about pitting neighbor against neighbor. That’s not who we are in Prince William County, and some of you have heard me say that in different forums. This is about a proposed policy change where we have to, again quoting from the NSBA document, “navigate the journey without the benefit of clear law at the federal level.” This board should have as its goal, the development implementation of a policy that is informed by law, protects students, and makes sense for the community that we’re serving. Leading this conversation with an eye,” this is a quote, “leading this conversation with an eye towards informed policy development can help increase awareness and understanding, minimize resentment,” I think we’ve built up resentment instead of minimizing it, “and ultimately, we want to contribute to the safe learning environments for all. Right now, in my opinion, I would venture to say that most of the people in this room have resentful sentiments toward members of this board and how this policy change has been handled. It remains my opinion that this board is not prepared to pass this policy or answer the questions that the public has regarding its implementation.” Excuse me, I’ve got to take a drink. I asked last September, how many policies and regulations would have to be changed because of the proposed policy change? And that’s been touched on tonight. There are 18 policies and regulations that will have to be changed as a result of this. Mr. Sawyer said in a Prince William Times article that the reality is that policy changes are not just symbolic, they have a real impact on people’s lives. And he’s right. The public needs to know that the regulations, what the regulations are for Policy 060, they need to know what they’re going to be, and what changes are needed before passing this policy change. Because yes, policy changes are not just symbolic, and they do have a real impact on people’s lives. So what can be the impact of words in a legal motion or law? Many of the school divisions in Virginia, because I’ve studied some of them, many have passed sexual orientation and gender identity, or even just gender, and they’ve defined those terms in their policies. Many of those school divisions distinguish between employment and students in their nondiscrimination statements with separate statements for each. The proposed policy changes to 060 do not do either of these. Mr. Sawyer said in PW Times, “This is not simply a policy that protects students and staff to make them feel more welcome.” Well, I also decided, you know what? Let me look at what the government says about employment. So I took a look at Title 7 in the Department of Justice website. Title 7 is one of the legal references for our current policy. If you look at 060 on what the legal references are, and it covers employment rights. Title 7 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 makes it unlawful to discriminate against someone on the basis of race, color, natural origin, sex, including pregnancy and gender identity or religion. It also goes on to state that discriminatory practices under Title 7 also include harassment. And it goes on to talk about that. It says, “Employment decisions based on stereotypes or assumptions about abilities, traits, or performance of individuals of a certain race, color, natural origin, sex, or religion, and denial of employment opportunities to individuals because of marriage to or association with individual or particular race, color, natural origin, sex, or religion. Employment decisions and harassment based on an individual’s sex, including gender identity, transgender status, and nonconformity with gender stereotypes.” So these things are covered under the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title 7. Our policy takes guidance from that. So if those are, and this is a legitimate question I have, if we add, if we need to add to our nondiscrimination question, nondiscrimination policy, why would we do that if we’re already covered under Title 7? That’s a confusing thing to me. So I’ve heard it said, please let me speak. I’ve heard it said that our federal government includes sexual orientation and gender identity in law, so the least we can do is put it in our policy. Actually, what’s currently listed in many government agencies is not in fact U.S. law, but based on executive order. House Bill HR 2282, the Equality Act, has been introduced to Congress. It amends the Civil Rights Act of 1964 to include sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity, along with the prohibited categories of discrimination or segregation in places of public accommodation. At the same time, House Bill HR 2796, the Civil Rights Uniformity Act of 2017, has also been introduced to Congress this month, discussing interpreting and defining civil rights laws and who has the right to do so. Congress is also still trying to define our nondiscrimination laws. There are many people who are associating guidance with law. You all know about the Department of Education Office of Civil Rights Dear Colleague Letter from May 2016 that describes Title 9 as encompassing discrimination based on students’ gender identity, including discrimination based on a student’s transgender status. There are many people, and I’ve seen it in some emails, and I’ve seen it in many publications, who are still erroneously interpreting from this guidance. That letter, as you know, was withdrawn by the Dear Colleague Letter of February 2017. And when you’re looking at Title 9, nobody really knows what the definitions in Title 9 mean. There are so many court cases. So those interpretations gave, the interpretations that were given in that guidance letter of 2016 gave rise to significant litigation regarding school restroom and locker room use. That’s why so many people talk about the school restrooms and locker room. They have a legitimate reason to talk about it. It was guidance given by the federal government last year. So there’s been the eruption of litigation due to those letters. This is not by any means settled law. I also have to point out that the red line policy of Policy 060 provided by Chairman Sawyer, that the proposed policy erroneously cites guidance of the U.S. Department of Education as a legal reference in support of the policy change. This is just not accurate. Continuing the thought that words mean something and the policy changes can have an impact on people’s lives. Has this board considered or addressed a transgender student’s preferred name or pronoun used? Have we discussed how this will be done under the proposed policy change? How will this be impacted by passing a nondiscrimination policy protecting gender identity? What if a student or staff member has a religious or sincerely held belief and does not want to use that name or pronoun? How do we handle these situations at the same time working to treat all of our students with respect and dignity? We have not addressed those issues with this policy change. Canada’s Senate this week addressed pronoun use in a major law with the passing of Bill C16. This bill places gender identity and gender expression into the country’s Human Rights Code and a hate crime category of its criminal code. Lawyer D. Jared Brown, also an appointee to the committee, pointed out as an example, quote, “Mandating use of pronouns requires one to use words that are not their own, that imply a belief or an agreement with a certain theory on gender,” he was quoted as saying. “If you try to disavow that theory, you can be brought before the Human Rights Commission for misgendering or potentially find yourself guilty of a hate crime. To sum up on the subject of gender, we’re going to have government-mandated speech.” That happened in Canada. We also know that there have been lawsuits in the United States where teachers have used the wrong gender. It happens. So if we don’t identify in policy how we’re going to work with that, we’re being negligent. We’ve got to identify how we’re going to handle it. So how do you enforce the policy change without the accompanying regulations? What would need to be changed? What would enforcement look like? Student safety is mentioned as to why we need to pass the policy change. So what do we have in place currently to protect our students? Well, recently, we had a Safe Schools presentation, and we’ve had some presentations from our counseling staff. We’ve talked about the many things that we offer in Prince William County Schools. So Prince William County Schools has a 10-page bullying regulation, and it’s based on the state guidance. It covers all of our students. The regulation defines bullying. It explains the complaint procedure. It outlines the guidelines for responding to student bullying complaints. It covers education of faculty and staff. Regulation 738-1, that’s a bullying regulation, is 733.01-1. Regulation 738-1 is the complaint procedures for student claims of discrimination or harassment. Again, there are definitions of discrimination and harassment, the complaint procedures, and it provides instructions for appealing complaints as well as forms for filing complaints and appeals. Regulation 738-3, Harassment of Students, contains a reference to Title 9, definition of harassment, and complaint procedures. The Prince William County Schools Code of Conduct, each student goes out, as you know, goes over the Code of Conduct at the beginning of the school year, and they’re encouraged to go over it at home, and then it’s talked about at school. It’s available online. On page 17, there’s a summary of discipline code that includes a list of conduct currently viewed as just cause for disciplinary action, shall include but not be limited to. It also lists preventative or corrective measures available to school administrators. Ms. Williams made a statement tonight that this will not be changed in any way, shape, or form. And I would make the statement to not change the Prince William County Schools’ Code of Behavior if this policy is indeed passed would be negligent, because it would negate what has just been passed. So think about that. We know that there have been high rates of student suicide in the LGBTQ community at large, and they’ve been cited as a reason to approve this policy change. Prince William County Schools has already been responding to community concern about student suicides in the county. Sorry, this is personal. We have offered many student and parent programs, including a suicide awareness information night sponsored by the Safe Schools Advisory Council. The Loudoun County Rock Opera, Wilt to Survive, was presented at Battlefield High School. Forest Park High School students continue to host the Spriggs United Suicide Awareness Walk that’s well-attended by members from all over the county. These are just a few, and our staff can provide a list of resources and programming that we’ve offered or are working on. Suicide is something that I believe all of us in this division take incredibly seriously. I’ve seen lots of comments in social media and from board members about bullying that has occurred in our Prince William County Schools and with LGBTQ students. You’ve heard from staff members, you’ve heard in the community, there have been no documented reports. And this concerns me. So we’re seeing these things reported in social media, but we hear from staff we haven’t had it documented. That’s a concern for all of us. So I see the comments that it’s not a protected class and students don’t feel safe. But what about the parents? If you, if your child is being bullied, or if you know your child is being bullied, for heaven’s sakes, please report it. Advocate for your child. If we don’t... Please, let me speak. If we don’t know there’s a problem, we can’t help with it. And I will tell you, things might have been different a few years ago, but this is something that I can tell you we’re taking very seriously. We are listening. And I will also point out, thank you. Thank you.
She has the floor. Please let her speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were provided information not too long ago about a staff training that was done last summer, and I read over the training that was provided. And I’m very glad that Prince William County Schools, without any kind of policy change, took the steps to provide a staff training for how to work with and provide for LGBTQ students. And I don’t think everybody realizes that that’s happened. There’s nothing in our policy that says you can’t report bullying because you’re LGBTQ. Bullying is bullying. Assault is assault. Harassment is harassment, no matter who you are. If you’re our student, you’re important. We want you to feel safe. So what do we do as a division now? We have to work harder in all of our schools to promote a climate of respect, civility, and kindness toward each other, no matter our differences. And this is something I’ve spoken on in many places and many times. We’ve seen how, in our culture, respect has declined. We’ve seen how people, you can see it on social media just the last few days, we can see how people talk to each other. We have got to work with our children, kindergarten through grade 12, and help them understand that we have to treat each other with respect. Doesn’t matter if we have differences. We learn what we have in common. This isn’t something that can just be put in a policy and like magic, it’s done. This has to be a priority, and not just in our schools, but all of us working together in the community. People on both sides of the issues have been making statements the last few days on social media that were full of hate and misunderstandings. Folks, that’s not representative of who we are in Prince William County, and we have to do better than this. The Centers for Disease Control lists on its website things schools can do to promote healthy and safety among LGBTQ, LBGTQ youth, I’m sorry, bleh, LGBTQ youth, forgive me. My mouth is feeling like paste right now after all this talking. We already do many of these things in Prince William County Schools. They say to promote health and safety among LGBTQ youth, schools can implement the following policies and practices. Encourage respect for all students and prohibit bullying, harassment, and violence against all students. Identify safe spaces such as counselor’s offices, designated classrooms, or student organizations where LGBTQ youth can receive support from administrators, teachers, or other school staff. Encourage student-led and student-organized school clubs that promote a safe, welcoming, and accepting school environment. Example, Gay-Straight Alliances, which are school clubs open to youth of all sexual orientations, and most of our high schools have those. Ensure that the health curricula or educational materials include HIV, other STD, or pregnancy intervention, prevention information that is relevant to LGBTQ youth, such as ensuring that curricular materials use inclusive language or terminology. Encourage school district and school staff to develop and publicize trainings on how to create safe and supportive school environments for all students regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. Encourage staff to attend these trainings. Facilitate access to community-based providers who have experience providing health services, including HIV/STD testing and counseling to LGBT youth. Facilitate access to community-based providers who have experience in providing social and psychological services to LGBTQ youth. We can’t always know if your child is struggling or needs help. You have to talk to us so that we know when there are concerns. We can’t help if we don’t know there’s a problem. I want you to know that I will continue to advocate for each one of our kids with all the passion that I’ve advocated for each of my own. Your kids are your most important resource, and we realize that. We also value them, and we also want the best for each one of them. A couple of questions to reflect on before we vote. Is our current policy working? For our students, yes, I believe our current policy is working. Can we do better? Yes, and I believe we will. What are our current practices? These are questions that I asked last year. What are our current practices? Do we need to improve our current practices as a policy change? Our current practices involve working compassionately with care while respecting the privacy of each of our families that approach our Prince William County School staff. I said last September that if we make a decision now and the courts later change rulings, then we are taking all of our constituents on a legal and very emotional roller coaster. The Supreme Court has sent the Gavin Graham case back down to the 4th District. The National School Board Association has a document on their website with transgender litigation that is 27 pages long, that was updated in December. Federal, state, and even local government nondiscrimination statements are not in agreement. How can we consider doing this now? So some districts in Virginia, and 40 of the 50 largest school districts in the country, have adopted sexual orientation and gender identity into their nondiscrimination statements. How does it signify that just because they did, that it’s right for Prince William County Schools and our constituents right now, especially with the negligent way this policy change has been introduced and handled, and the way it has stirred up the public, so that right now, I don’t know how we’d have community buy-in? We need to work together on this, not cause this kind of division in our county. As the National School Board, as the National School Board Association said, “Public schools belong to all, and public policy decisions about important issues should be made only after the appropriate involvement of those affected by the decision and with due consideration for rights of those holding dissenting views. Seek to reconcile sometimes deeply conflicting community views and legal imperatives in these issues.” We haven’t done our job. This policy should not be passed at this time, and until it’s properly vetted with the community and has the accompanying regulations, and everybody knows exactly what’s going to be included and how it’s going to work, I feel it’s irresponsible for us to pass this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Is there any further debate? Is there any further debate? Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, or tonight, we're here to discuss a policy amendment to Policy 060. The question at hand is a very specific amendment to a very specific policy. And that's what I'm going to address tonight. Before moving on to really the meat of the policy analysis and discussion, there's been a lot of talk about emotions on both sides. And I will just say that sadly, this issue has been poorly debated on both sides, and that has not been helpful as a culture, as a community, and in this particular instance of it. I have walked out of a church service where it was implied that we should go back to policies of 200 years ago of how we dealt with LGBTQ people. I have also seen, and I didn't go back, I have also seen, though, incredible hate on the other side, as people who have wanted to have peaceful discussions of this topic have been labeled haters just for not taking the new approach. And the hate on both sides is not helpful to figuring out a policy solution. And that is what we are at hand to discuss. First of all, a couple of terms. First, policymaking. And this is what we have to do here on this board. Policymaking is where we go ahead and we identify what the problem is, we then identify a solution, and we ask ourselves whether that solution solves the problem without creating significant unintended consequences. And that's what we should be going about here today. Second is the word discrimination. We are specifically amending the nondiscrimination policy. And the question of what it is that we need to solve is a question of what is the discrimination currently going on that we're solving for. It's an important distinction to understand that we are not solving, there are both bullying and sexual harassment policies, as well as policies that cover numerous other things. Per what's being brought forward, intentionally, those policies are not being amended. Those topics are distinct from the topic of discrimination. And that's important as we think through this. So then the next question is, what is going on in the status quo? And first is, why are we here where we are today? There's been discussion of the discussion back in the fall. We had multiple meetings on that topic. We've had a vote. At the time, the thought was to push it towards now in order to be able to get clarity on the legal landscape, and also to be able to work out details, and specifically to do that through a policy working group. There has not been any clarity brought to the legal situation. There are still cases being worked out on multiple levels, and there is no binding case on the merits of this topic in a jurisdiction that governs our locality. Secondly is the question of working out any sort of details. There's been no effort to do that. There's been, there was, when a push was made to actually direct the group, or the task force, on doing something, nobody wanted to bring a motion forward to direct them. And there was, there's been no public hearings to hear people out moving towards this point. There's been no discussion on the details of what this policy change will do. And that's important to understand about where we are today. Next is current policy. LGBTQ students in Prince William County, under the direction of our staff, receive some of the highest level of attention to work with and provide accommodations. We regularly talk about the need to improve special education in this division, and we definitely do. But LGBTQ students receive attention from much higher-level staff in a much faster fashion in order to provide the accommodations and make sure that they are receiving the quality education all students should have. Next, we've also understanding where we are right now. We heard a lot of zeros earlier. It's important to, when you're trying to figure out what it is that you're solving right now, you identify what's the problem. And the problem is very hard to put a finger on. There have been, there have been zero OCR complaints from LGBTQ students in Prince William County. Now, the Office of Civil Rights under the previous administration was very open to said complaints, investigated complaints in other school divisions, and took them very seriously. There were zero complaints to the Office of Civil Rights at that time. Also, we have had no one fired for being LGBTQ, and no one who's been tried to be fired for that. To bring that up as something that we might do really is fear mongering. And that's not helpful to figure out what it is that we're trying to solve. And so we have to figure out what our specific thing is that we're trying to solve here. We have students and employees who both work and attend school here and are able to do so successfully. Now, the question, well, and then one other discussion of the current landscape, there's been a lot of talk about the VSHL policy. And while it's already in place, life's all good. VSHL actually worked out a very detailed policy in terms of what the definition is for qualifying. And there are three medical standards there for who qualifies for their policy. I would surmise that if we tried applying that same definition here, we would have people very upset for requiring people to meet that definition. And that's because we already work with students on a much broader level here than that policy. But not all policies across the board can be applied apples to apples on this topic. And that's because other policies have actually worked out the definitions of who meets criteria and what the implications are of those policies. And that brings us also to the question of other school divisions. We heard a fair bit of research on that topic earlier, but what that leaves out is the work done to get to those points, and also what's resulted since then. Fairfax is our closest neighbor, and Fairfax also rushed very quickly to implement this policy, and they've since had to put their implementation on hold because they hadn't worked things out in advance. And there have been other school divisions throughout the country that some spent two years working out the details before changing things. And it's that level of figuring out what this policy means, what it is that we're doing, that's critical to effective policymaking. So then getting to the plan, and Keith, could you just put up the slide real quick? I think it's important to keep in mind what it is that we're actually voting on here. This is the red line proposal for what we're voting on. This is, I'll make a couple notes on this. This is the same proposal that was brought forward last fall. It's identical. I'm going to read an interesting note on it. Let me see. So the Inside Nova article yesterday stated, "Sawyers argues that this view continues to conflate the nondiscrimination discrimination policy change with transgender bathroom use. He originally proposed a policy to address school bathrooms, but elected to defer to each school administrator to make their own decision on the matter." Well, this is a policy that was introduced a year ago, and apparently there's an admission that at that time, it was to deal with bathrooms. Now, what's important to know about this policy is the supposed language that excludes bathrooms and locker rooms isn't in this policy. It's merely guidance to the superintendent, which really doesn't even take a public or official vote to change or alter. So this is what we are specifically voting on here. We're also voting on this with no regulations or understanding of what this is going to do in practice. So the interesting question, though, is what is included here? And one of the things that is included is, and this is why it's important to actually dig through on what we're dealing with here. Under the legal references, what was added was the guidance to the U.S. Department of Education. This is at the time last year when this was introduced. That guidance is very explicit that changing this policy will change our bathroom policies, our locker room policies, our overnight field trip accommodations, and numerous other policies. So it actually is in the policy. The other question is when we're trying to figure out what it is that we're actually changing, because everybody's been dodging around the topic. No one's been willing to say this policy will actually do X to fix things. And a lot of people are claiming it will do numerous different things. Some of those claims are actually in conflict with each other. And there is a complete lack of clarity of what this policy will specifically do. We've got some people here holding up signs saying this is not about bathrooms. We have other people coming forward advocating, saying this is about bathrooms, and that changing this will change our bathroom policies. The ACLU sent us a letter laying out that if we don't, if we pass this and don't change our bathroom and locker room policies, we will be discriminating under the policy we pass here. And this is where actually knowing the details of what we're passing is critical. And where having done the work in advance to actually bring people together, figure out what we're voting on, is actually critical to effective policymaking. The other, and then there's also the other document, when there's no details, the other document that hasn't been listed yet is the document Schools in Transition. It's written by the ACLU, the NEA, different equality groups advocating for exactly what these policy changes will do. It covers numerous of the same things that have been stated. It's also explicit that students should be able to, on overnight field trips, sleep with people of the gender they identify with, and those students nor their parents should be notified about this. Think about that for a second. To think that that wouldn't raise any concerns or alarms with other people, and be both a privacy and a religious thing that should be balanced. But this is the extent of the regulations that are being advocated for passage of these policies. It's also, as we look at where these policies have been passed before, there is just a story out of Richmond where they were working through these policies, where a young Muslim student has been now pushing back on the implications of that policy on her religion and the expression of her religion. And that's where trying to, effective policymaking knows what it is we're passing before we pass it. And that's not what we're doing here, because fundamentally, there hasn't been the effort to engage the community, to lay out what it is that we're voting on, and actually bring clarity before we have this vote. And that's why this issue's been stirred up and become so heated, because the people advancing this are really not doing it to figure out, to lay out an effective policy here. And so that's the kind of work that should be done in advance, and sadly has not. So for those reasons, I have numerous concerns about this, and really the poor policy work being done to bring forward this policy. I would like to offer one amendment, and per policy, our amendments had to be submitted in advance. And so the amendment I would like to offer is to the guidance given to the superintendent and his staff stating that in implementing this policy, no student, employee, or parent shall be required or encouraged to violate a deeply held religious belief. I think that's critical to having an effective policy. Sure. So Ms. Ralston just asked me to read it again, and I'll read it again. I emailed it to the chairman and vice chair in advance. It states, "In implementing this policy, no student, employee, or parent shall be required or encouraged to violate a deeply held religious belief."
Are we covered under the current policy?
Hold on one second. I think that ultimately, yeah, gets into the territory of regulation, which would be driven by the superintendent when we pass a, let me just finish, driven by the superintendent when we pass a policy. So ultimately, Mr. Deutsch, I'm going to rule it not germane to this particular motion at this time.
But, Mr. Chairman, you've given guidance to the superintendent in other parts of this policy. So are you saying that that guidance is also not germane?
Again, religion is already in the policy. So again, I think it's ultimately, I'm going to rule the motion not germane.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to overrule the decision of the chair.
We have a challenge decision of the chair. Mr. Wilk, I'll just make sure. So Mr. Deutsch challenges the decision of the chair that his amendment is germane. Is there a second to that challenge?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Debbie, I'm just, Debbie has to write all this down. I can't necessarily enter this on my computer here. So Ms. Ralston, seconds. Like I said, I'll be very brief. I think this is already covered in policy, and this is ultimately is part of regulation in relation to religion that is already in the policy. So that's where I am with that. Mr. Deutsch?
The motion put forward, since there is no regulation, is also giving guidance to the superintendent in the things that should be balanced, in working out the regulations on here. And so I want to offer something that is also critical to effectively figuring this policy out.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Those wanting to sustain the ruling of the chair, meaning agree with the chair that the motion is not germane to this, that Mr. Deutsch's motion is not germane, so agreeing with my decision, sustaining the rule of the chair, please vote yes by raising your right hand. Sorry, let me state it one more time. The chair, we had a question. We had a question down here. The question is, you're sustaining the, thank you, we are sustaining the ruling of the chair that the motion is not germane to, Mr. Deutsch's motion is not germane to this agenda item and to this motion. Is everybody clear on that? Okay, on the board, I'm talking? We good? Okay, sorry. You're right. So those in favor and agreeing with the chair that this motion is not germane, please vote yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed? I'm sorry, let me say that again. Mr. Wilk is in favor sustaining. Ms. Jessie, myself, and Ms. Williams sustain. Those opposed? Ms. Satterwhite, Mr. Deutsch, and Ms. Ralston. Thank you. Mr. Deutsch still has the floor. I'm just waiting. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, then, on that note, I would also like to offer another amendment. The second amendment would be that in implementing this policy, the fundamental right to privacy shall be upheld for all students and staff. In implementing this policy, the fundamental right to privacy shall be upheld for all students and staff.
The same ruling will apply of not being germane, that this is part of regulation. Excuse me. We need to be able, we need, excuse me. We need to be able to operate the meeting here. Mr. Deutsch, I will make the same ruling. That is not germane, and this is part of the superintendent's purview in when creating regulation.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the same motion, overrule the decision of the chair for the same reason.
Sure thing. I've already explained myself. Is there a second to overrule a decision of the chair?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that second.
Mr. Brand, seconds of the motion. I've already kind of made it clear that I think this is part of regulation, so I won't say too much. If anyone else wants to go, Mr. Deutsch?
Well, I will state again that we are offering guidance to the superintendent in this motion, and therefore, all guidance should be on the table.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Those, again, wanting to sustain the ruling of the chair, agreeing with the chair that the motion is not germane, again, agreeing with the chair that the motion is not germane, sustaining the rule in chair. Those in favor of the ruling of the chair, please vote yes by raising your right hand. Ms. Williams, Ms. Jessie, and myself. Those opposed? Ms. Satterwhite, Mr. Brand, Mr. Deutsch, and Ms. Ralston. And those abstaining? Mr. Wilk. Mr. Deutsch, let me get your exact wording so we can get a second to it. Let me click on the right buttons. Give me one second, Mr. Deutsch, and make sure I get it in the right place here. Mr. Deutsch, is it okay, I'm asking you, to send an email about this, is it okay if I copy and paste the wording in the email that is, "The fundamental right to privacy shall be upheld in implementing this policy"?
That's fair.
Okay.
That's fair.
And Mr. Deutsch made the motion. And do we have a second for that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Ms. Satterwhite, thank you. Mr. Deutsch, the motion is yours.
Thank you. This motion, well, granted, all regulations are going to have to come back to this board for a vote, but this motion does give guidance to the superintendent within it, and I think that this is an important balancing effort in terms of how to give that guidance.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? As far as, this is just the amendment, we're only voting on the amendment that the fundamental right to privacy shall be upheld in implementing this policy. That would be, that was, those words will be added, I copy and pasted directly from Mr. Deutsch's email that he sent. Guidance, correct?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams, so that's your name? Ms. Williams?
I think so, for the moment. I just want to clarify for the public that we are adding this to the guidance section and not to the actual nondiscrimination commitment to equity policy that we are voting on. And I also wanted to just ask Mr. Deutsch, is there a place somewhere that we don't currently do this, that we need to add this? Because I'm pretty sure that that's part of what we already do, in specific. I'm not sure how we're violating someone's privacy rights, so maybe I could just kind of ask you for further understanding on how you feel that someone's privacy is going to be violated?
Sure. Well, nobody knows what the implementation of this policy is going to be, so we're trying to balance these. I mean, I've offered similar just questions of where specifically are people being discriminated against in terms of getting an education and a job, but I think there are some differences on that question, and I think we need balancing guidance in terms of how those regulations are going to look.
I'm sorry, Mr. Deutsch, how their privacy was going to be violated? That's what I'm looking for, is I'm, I'm trying to figure out how this nondiscrimination policy is going to affect someone's privacy rights being violated. That's what I'm asking.
Right. There are, there is no clarity or details on what this policy change will do, period, so I'm offering some language to help with that.
And how do you define that, sir?
The right to privacy? I think it's been defined through numerous court cases over the last 40 years.
Like, the policy we're voting on now? I'm sorry, just from my own understanding, because this is a new addition, even though we received this, I'm curious to know for myself and for the public how it is that we are defining your right to privacy. Because that has been the major objection, is everybody's definition to things, and if we are going to nitpick definitions of things, I'm not trying to nitpick, but I really do, like I do with everything else, want to know what you mean when you say that.
Okay. The right to privacy is a phrase that has a 40-year history in terms of what it means within the U.S. court system. It's actually a very clearly defined term, especially comparative to the current term that we are discussing here.
Yes, can you provide that definition, please? That's what I'm asking.
It is a fundamental right that stems from the numbers of the Bill of Rights, per Griswold, and has been further fleshed out in numerous Supreme Court cases.
How do you define it?
No, stop, stop, stop.
Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to move on, I just wanted to make a point, and that is, it's not fair to nitpick one way or the other. If we're going to nitpick, it should be on all sides, not just part. And that is my point to this back and forth with you. Like I've said before, if you're going to nitpick, we should do it equally. This is about equality, and, and that's the point. So if we're going to add things, and we have people here who are upset because they don't understand what it is going on, or they don't have an understanding of what it is that we're voting on, and the reason why you're objecting so far is because you don't feel that we've done our due diligence, and we don't, and you don't have definitions on what's going on, this is my point. We can do this all night, and I don't want to, but I'm just saying to you, as someone whose major objection is that we have not done enough studies, and we don't have the proper definitions of what could occur next, what is the definition that you're saying?
Sure. I, I will just state that in policymaking, the burden is on the people pushing forward to policy change to actually define what they're doing.
That would be you, sir.
Uh, no, that would be, pushing for policy change.
Any further discussion on this matter? Hold on. Ms. Satterwhite, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. For clarification, is this for guidance to the policy, or is this an amendment to the policy amendment?
This is, the way I have it, I'm, I'm going to answer the, at least how I have it written, based on what Mr. Deutsch said, is this would be, just like the, the guidance that's already in there, this would be additional guidance. That's how I have it, that's how I currently have it written.
Okay. Mr. Deutsch, is that what you intended?
Yeah, all we're doing here is, there's guidance being given to the superintendent to set some boundaries on the regulations we're going to have to vote on eventually, and I'm just adding some.
Okay, okay, that, thank, I appreciate that. And, you know, if we're going to talk about definitions, one thing also, we haven't defined what sexual orientation and gender identity specifically mean in our policy, and many school divisions have done so, so just a thought.
Any further debate? Okay. Mr. Wilk?
Yeah, I just want to say, a number of those districts that have updated their nondiscriminations have given, you know, obviously same, similar language of respecting privacy and balancing rights of, you know, LGBT students, so I, I don't see it as an issue with guidance to the superintendent.
Any further debate? Okay. Those in favor, I'm going to read it, the amendment is additional guidance to the superintendent that the fundamental right of privacy shall be upheld in implementing this policy. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. I got everyone but me. I will abstain. Sorry, I'm just making sure I click the right buttons, everyone.
The vote is seven yes, one abstain. Sawyer's motion passed.
All right. It is no surprise that I fully support this motion. I'm glad some of you are sitting down for that. And so ultimately, it's time to call the vote. Those in favor of the motion that the Prince William County School Board adopt the changes to the nondiscrimination policy, policy 060, by adding sexual orientation and gender identity, in doing so, the Prince William County Board gives guidance to the superintendent that he is not to change the current regulations and practices regarding bathroom and locker room use with the amendment that just passed, with additional guidance to the superintendent that the fundamental right to privacy shall be upheld in implementing this policy. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Mr. Wilk, Ms. Ralston, Ms. Jesse, and myself. I'm sorry, and Ms. Williams, I apologize. Lori, I did not mean to miss you. Those opposed? Ms. Satterwhite, Mr. Brand, and Mr. Deutsch. Satterwhite, Mr. Brand, and Mr. Deutsch.
The vote is five yes, three no. Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have, we have the remainder of the meeting to go through. I ask that you be quiet, whether you stay in the room or you exit, I please ask that you do so quietly. With no objection, we can take a very brief five-minute recess. I know I, some people have to use the restroom. Five-minute recess, no objection from the board. We are in recess.[1145.01]
Which is the FY 2017 Fourth Quarter Budget Review. Mr. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Dr. Walts?
Mr. Klein, I apologize. Members in the back, citizens in the back will need to have quiet, please. We'll need to have quiet. You can talk out in the atrium, but there's no more communicate, no more talk. Only Mr. Klein is talking now. Mr. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Walts. Mr. Wallingford, Director of Financial Services, will give a brief interim update on the status of the fiscal year 2017 budget. Mr. Wallingford.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Chairman Sawyers, Members of the Board, and Dr. Walts. Very brief presentation this evening, no slides. We have just a handful, just a handful of days left in the fiscal year. Our interim audit work has been finalized. Auditors will be coming out shortly. We'll be doing financial statements. And the information that Mr. Klein presented to you at the third quarter presentation are the numbers we expect to see at the end of the fiscal year for fiscal 2017. Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
This one is tucked under Superintendent's time, but it is an action item. Maybe it's supposed to be that way either way. Career and Technical Education Advisory Council Superintendent Appointees. There is, this is an action item. Again, this is for the CTE Advisory Council Superintendent Appointees. I'll make the motion that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment and reappointment of individuals to the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council for a two-year term effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2019. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Discussion on this? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. And I have everyone, Ms. Jessie, I'm sorry, did I get it? Okay, Ms. Jessie, thank you. It's unanimous.
Vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
And we're on to Superintendent's time. Dr. Walts.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers, Members of the Board. Congratulations to Mattie Kramer, a graduating senior at Battlefield High School and daughter of staff member Amy Kramer. Mattie won first place in Virginia for the Invest Right Essay Competition. This is the second consecutive year that the state winner of Invest Right has been a Battlefield student. Congratulations also to Fadil Mohammed, rising sophomore at Osborn Park High School on winning first place in the Gaithersburg Book Festival Short Story Contest for high school students. Two schools recently received exciting grants. The Laura Bush Foundation awarded Potomac View Elementary School a grant of $6,600-plus to purchase new books and other resources for the school library. Congratulations to Radenziger, who applied for the grant. Ms. Zenzinger and the, also the Sudely Elementary School received a grant from Lowe's for $4,200 to create an outdoor classroom. Teachers, staff, and volunteers, including an Eagle Scout at four high schools, literally put their backs into creating certified wildlife habitats. See our website for details. The projects were possible through a partnership with the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries and Environmental Protection Agency. As a reminder to students and parents, I ask that you make time to read during the summer months. Read to your children and encourage them to read. The summer reading list is posted on the school website and in all Prince William County libraries. Also, a reminder to parents of rising sixth grade students. All students entering the sixth grade in Prince William County Public Schools this fall must present proof that they have had a tetanus, diphtheria, and pertussis T.Dap booster shot within the past five years. By state law, without proof of this immunization or an exemption on file, children will not be able to enroll in school for the 1718 school year without that. Next, two important dates on college fairs that students can put on their calendars. The first will be at Osborn Park High School on September 25th, the second at Freedom High School on October 12th. Details will be provided later this summer on our website. And speaking of college, I'm excited to report that the class of 2017 earned almost $57 million in scholarships. This amount, this amount marks an $18 million increase over the previous year, 2016. In total, 1,564 scholarships were earned by 630 students. Remember that news keeps flowing from our school division throughout the summer. To stay informed, download the PWCS mobile app, sign up for e-news, and be sure your email account is current in parent portal. For the 12th year in a row, just wanted to let you know I did finish all of my school visits. This year to all of our 100 schools and education centers. So, it's always fun, it's always enlightening to talk with staff, students, and parents. In addition to everything I've reported thus far, each two weeks I had the opportunity to attend the School of Excellence celebrations at Ashland, Woodbridge Middle School, and I congratulate them on their achievements. Also attended, since the last meeting, Garfield and Freedom High Schools graduations, and they were beautifully executed. Wanted to just send goodwill send-off to two people who will be leaving our leadership team. Craig Gaffeler, who is moving to New York, and I just want to thank you for a tremendous job over the last two years as an Associate Superintendent. You've done an incredible job. You hit the ground running. You exceeded my expectations for someone in a position for that length of time, and you really did a great job. And finally... And finally, I wanted to congratulate Ray Darlington, who is retiring. And this is her last school board meeting, and I know she's going to be deeply saddened, but I've assured her that, living in Prince William County, she'll be able to continue watching on television. When I came to Prince William County, she was an Associate Superintendent and assumed the second deputy position in the history of Prince William County Public Schools and served, did an extraordinary job being my right-hand person for almost 11 years. And I just want to make a couple of brief statements about Ray. One of the things I truly admired and respected about her was, I really, truly always felt that she had kids at the center of her work, and that was not always easy. She was the kind of person that if I thought maybe we had, maybe not handled everything quite right with the situation, she could go in and dissect that, whatever amount of time and energy that took. And if we had made a mistake, she would correct that and apologize and do whatever needed to be done to make that right. Couple of other notable things I want to mention about her is, contrary to all the rumors of the Board who hired me, there were not a lot of things that that Board wanted me to do initially coming in. One was, they thought it was a very good school system, and they coined this world-class concept and wanted it to be made even better. The second thing is, they wanted a better accountability system and appraisal system for employees. And one of the best decisions I ever made was to put Ray in charge of that. And I had to come back to the Board because the Board was a little antsy about why it was taking so long. But she was very smart in terms of involving lots of rank-and-file teachers in a process that took three years and actually helped to serve as part of what was eventually the state model for a statewide appraisal process. And she continued to get input and feedback from teachers even after we implemented our appraisal process, and we've made a number of improvements since. Now, that's only a very few things, but there's lots of other people wanting to talk, I think. But I just want to say, Ray, I will miss you. There will be, never be another Ray Darlington, and I look forward to working with you through the ROP program. And so, I am grateful to the school board, the employees, parents, and guardians, and of course, our students for their support this year. Thanks as well to our elected officials, our business partners, and the community for supporting the Prince William County Public Schools. I wish everyone a safe and enjoyable summer, and I look forward to working with everyone and our students returning on August 28th for the start of another great school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Moving on to item 19.01. This is revision of the Prince William County, excuse me, revision of Policy 744, short-term suspension of students. This is the second reading. This is an action item. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the revision of Policy 744, short-term suspensions of students.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie?
I have a second.
Thank you. Discussion. Those in favor of this motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Revision of Policy 745, Long-Term Suspension and Expulsion of Students, Readmission and Exclusion Admission. It's the second reading. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the revision of Policy 745, Long-Term Suspension or, excuse me, Suspension or Expulsion of Students, Readmission and Exclusion/Admission.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie, that's good enough. Ms. Jessie, Ms. Jackie, is that a new name? Ms. Jessie, seconds. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. I'm sorry, I got everyone to my right, please give me, thank you. You put it down. I look left first and then right. I'm sure that's no surprise to anybody. Sorry, I couldn't resist. It was low-hanging fruit. I apologize.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
And 1903, Revision of Policy 747, Office of Student Management and Alternative Programs. It's the second reading, and yes, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the revision of Policy 747, Office of Student Management and Alternative Programs.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
That surprises me. Ms. Jessie. Ms. Jessie, thank you. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Onto Board Matters. I would request that every member be as brief as they possibly can. We will start, I started with Ms. Satterwhite, I believe, last time, so I'll start with Mr. Wilk, to my far right. Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wrap up. I had a great time attending four graduation ceremonies, the two in my district, and also great to be a part of Garfield again, and I'm trying to think of the other one I went to. No, I went to my two. Potomac Forest Park, Garfield. It was, oh, Patriot. Oh, Patriot, yeah, and I mentioned that last time. That was a great ceremony. Went to the fifth grade graduations of Henderson, Montclair, and Dumfries. I try to rotate them because everyone puts those on the same nights, so it was good to be there. And I guess I'll wrap it up. I do want to, I want to just commend, Sean, I know you're hopefully coming back in the fall, but I really enjoy working with you and all the conversations we have. I think we have very similar, obviously not all similar views tonight, but I think it's important to have that discourse between us, and I actually don't feel it's appropriate for the shot someone took at your job, and I know how hard you work as a dad, as I do too, and I wish you could stay longer, but I realize, you know, and it's good that Gil's coming back too, but thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been an exciting couple of weeks with numerous high school graduations in a packed week, yeah, packed week, two weeks ago. Got to learn a lot about different school cultures and traditions and the way that all of them celebrate the exciting time of different students graduating. I was able to attend graduations at Patriot, Stonewall Jackson, New Directions, OP, and Hilton, and I got to meet and be there for numerous students, and I think that's really what we're all about at the end of the day, is just, it's incredible to see the raw excitement and emotion with students who have put so much time and energy into getting through those first critical 12 years of their education, and no matter what challenges they've had to face, have been able to meet that accomplishment. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Ralston.
Just briefly, it has been a wonderful school year. I'm very glad that I made it through. Well, it has been difficult from time to time. So, I wish everyone a great summer. I need you all to relax and be ready in September, in August, for another great year. The students have been superb. I attended graduations and promotionals from fifth to sixth grade and middle school from eighth to ninth, and then I had my, went to my granddaughter's graduation at Garfield. So, I say to you, have a great summer, and I'll see you in August.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to first say to my Board Member, Mr. Deutsch, I'm sorry for bickering back and forth. I just was making a point, and I didn't mean to just pick with you specifically. I tried to come back around and do those things, make those statements, and piggybacking off of Mr. Wilk, Mr. Braun, it's been an honor. We've had plenty of back-and-forth George Mason times and some other things, and as much as I am looking forward to Gil coming back, I am equally saddened by you not going to be sitting in that seat, and hopefully we get you for a little bit longer. It's been a couple more meetings. It's been great to hear new perspectives, and I'm always interested in learning new things, so thank you for that. I just wanted to say to my Board, it's been a very long year. I think that we've all done a tremendous amount of growing and learning about each other. We definitely still have a ways to go because we're all so different, but I think that tonight's vote is a good example of how we can be so different on different sides of the corn and still be civil with each other and come to a decision. And I just want to say, myself personally, I'm very proud of this Board for handling the situation and the decision we made tonight with such thought and respect towards each other. I think that's the goal of all of our tough decisions, and I think that we should take time out, as we do, to pick with each other, but also to congratulate each other on our growth and our progress, because if we don't do that, who will do it for us? I want to apologize to the public. I'm a little under the weather today, not germy, but allergy and quite tired. So, if I sound a little crazy, that's why. I also went to a few graduation ceremonies, and they are my favorite time of year. Being a Woodbridge alumni, I love to see the tradition and pomp and Being a Woodbridge alumni, I love to see the tradition and pomp and circumstance continue. New Directions, always hearing the students and all of the things that they go through in order to walk across that stage reminds me once again that I have no business being tired. And this is why I sit here, no matter what's going on. I also attended this year, plenty of elementary school promotions from fifth grade to sixth grade and I believe one middle school. It's just exciting to see these students and I love the fact that we take the time out to recognize their accomplishments and that it's not just graduating seniors that we take time out to congratulate, especially in today's times. A lot of our students, seeming at the elementary school level, have responsibilities that are unimaginable to us as adults. And I think it's important that we recognize everyone. And just keeping with, trying to keep it short, I'll say what I always say, just because school is over doesn't mean learning is. You got to keep reading. I know my son just loves me for that. You got to keep reading through the summer. I encourage everyone to try to learn something new every day and hopefully, as I've been saying here since I've been sitting in this seat, we will see more of you in the upcoming school year because that is how we do our job best, is when people come and they share their opinions and their thoughts. And I hope that we can continue to hear from the public and we can continue to better refine how we dialogue and how we interact with each other. And as Mr. Braun so nicely pointed out a few minutes ago, some of our school policies are so outdated and there's only eight of us in central office and there's a lot of things to go through as time moves on. There's nothing wrong with someone bringing something to our attention that needs to be fixed and let's work it out. So as I say always, let's keep learning and I'm going to wrap it up there. Apologize for saying that twice, but hopefully everyone has a good summer and see you in August.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My notes are a complete mess tonight. I'm usually one of those organized people that types things up, but I tell you, this is absolutely horrid. You know what I'm looking at right here, but I'll do my best. Since the last board meeting, I did attend a couple graduation ceremonies. One of those was New Directions at the Hilton Performing Arts Center, which was a very powerful ceremony. Very glad I went to that. The words of the students who graduated, especially the key speakers, was very inspirational, very moving, very emotional. So I'm glad I got a chance to take part of that. And also attended the Brentsville District High School graduation in Oaksville. And that was on a Saturday morning at the high school. And I guess going back to my teaching roots at Woodbridge, I do appreciate graduation ceremonies that actually happen at the schools. And we don't, we only have a couple of those in Woodbridge and Brentsville where they actually do occur at the schools. So I, and it's always a joy to, I'm not a Oaksville resident, but I always enjoy going there. And I love the things they put in their post in town. And when you went into, for graduation, they had the names of all the students on the post as you go down the street, you know, with the boys with the, and the black hats and the whites and the girl, I'm getting my words all jumbled, but you know what I mean. All their names were on the post as you're driving into Oaksville. So always a very positive experience. Let's see, other things, the joint CIP meeting, we're still having those. The next one is on Saturday morning, bright and early at 7:30. This will be held at the Oaksville School. Let's see, we do, I think the agenda was sent out today, so you should see that online. I think, I probably need to repost that or some others need to repost that maybe to kind of let you know where you can go find information about that. The agenda should be posted, surely any documentation, other papers that relate to those meetings are all posted online for you to, for you to look at. And speaking of a building-related topic, the 13th High School went before the County Planning Commission tonight that was passed unanimously. So hopefully at some point, we will see a shovel go into the ground with that badly-needed 13th High School. I want to thank Ms. Williams, Mr. Wilk for the kind words tonight. I really do appreciate that. You know, I'm definitely one of those lifelong learners and this year has been a learning experience. And Mr. Tredum should find out his departure from Djibouti Africa at some point over the summer. So I'm assuming I will be for a couple of meetings in September and possibly one in October, but we'll see. We'll see what his orders end up being. And I do want to say, it's been a pleasure to work with Craig and Ray. You both have been incredibly helpful to me. I will, there was one board meeting this year where I did not attend. That was back on the 18th for personal reasons, but I did tune in when I got home. And I will tell you, I did discover that if there's certain beverages, that if you're consuming them while you're watching a board meeting, makes it go a little bit better. So I just want to throw that out there. That if you do happen to pull up the feed online, wherever you happen to be on TV, partake. All right. I'd like to wish everybody a great summer. Thank you.
I will second Mr. Brand's motion for alcohol on the dais. Is that what you said? I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I read into that. I apologize. Ms. Satterwhite, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, it's hard to stop laughing after that one. Okay. I had the joy of attending fifth grade graduate, or fifth grade promotion ceremonies at Mullins, Sinclair and Sudley Elementary Schools as we wrapped up the school year. It was so much fun to go to the schools and catch up with teachers and students again. Always a joy to see the parents and families and see them celebrate. Just as Ms. Williams said, I want to encourage students to keep reading. I want to encourage you to check out the summer reading program at Prince William County Library. And I know I am looking forward to reading for pleasure, for change, instead of studying everything I'm studying for the meetings. So I'm looking forward to my break. I want to wish all of you a very safe and fun summer. Look forward to seeing you when we end up back here again in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite and Ms. Jessie.
Let me clarify that. School in August, meetings in September.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll let that go. Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite and Ms. Jessie.
I want to say thank you to all board members and to the new board members. I've learned a lot from each one of you and you have changed this board in many ways, but I've actually learned a lot about just bringing new people on and that whole process. And I appreciate that it is a learning curve and I hope that we've been supportive of each one of you. As I look at the end of the year, of course, read to everyone, including those women who are having babies. You need to read to those babies as soon as they come out of the womb. So it's from the womb to the classroom. I want to, I went to Woodbridge High School for their capstone presentation. It was awesome. And I want to thank Mr. Iman for putting it on our website. You did a fabulous job and I think I sent a note to you. Also attend the Cappys Award at the Kennedy Center. And Woodbridge High School did receive a Cappys for Othello, so congratulations to them. Serena Southers retired and I thought I was late in retirement, but Serena has been here forever. And I made a joke about the food and I want to make sure it was clear what I meant by that. And I said I was here when we could eat pork chops for lunch and all this stuff. It was really good, but we, at the time, we didn't know it would kill us. So, but we still miss it a lot because there was a time before site base that you could go to Antioch Elementary and get the best fried chicken and pork chops. But she has taken this program to a different level. And I think with the help of Dr. Walts, and when I saw the new uniforms, everybody, I knew that was a touch of Dr. Walts because, you know, he's like that. And I just wanted to say thank you to her. Graduations, Woodbridge High School, Osborne Park, New Directions, Potomac, Garfield, and of course, Woodbridge, which is my area, my favorite. I love the outside and I love that crisscross graduation ceremony. Also went to Hilton High School for their scholarship ceremony. For fifth grade promotional ceremonies, Old Bridge and Rockledge and Aquaquan, tremendous. And I want to congratulate Old Bridge because Old Bridge did something that was very unique and in that they invited all the high school graduates from Woodbridge High to come over and they formed a line and all these graduates went through the line. And Ms. Fleming met some of the students who went to Old Bridge and they actually remembered the song and they all start singing their theme from Old Bridge. But I've had a wonderful year in terms of just learning a lot and it's been challenging, I must say. I've done a lot as a principal, but it's just a different kind of challenge being on this board. But it's work that has to be done. And I want to thank all of you for all that you've done. We have had difference of opinions, but there are things that we all agree on. And I think the one thing we all agree on is high levels of learning for all of our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I think one thing, in my first full academic year in review as chairman, you know, obviously we can all talk about the disagreements and the arguments and all those types of things and that's certainly, certainly part of it and certainly what we're elected to do. We weren't elected to agree all the time and that's certainly part of the business. I'm obviously very happy with the result of the non-discrimination update that we had today, but first and foremost, I want to basically be very brief and thank my wife, Jamie, and our two kids who have lived this every single day with me since the day that I announced it, since they, as I announced on June 15th of 2016 to bring this forward in September of 2016. When I sat and watched the bodies add up at the Pulse nightclub and realized that I wasn't just someone who could send my thoughts and prayers anymore, I was someone who could actually do something about it. And things don't happen at this, things happen at the speed of government sometimes and certainly they don't happen as fast as I can, but I'm obviously, as I want to, excuse me, but I'm very happy with the result today. But what doesn't get a lot of praise is the people who support these elected officials every single day, every single day, our wife, our spouses, people that I see in the room today. And I want to thank you all for your passion and support of me and my family to get through this. You learn who your friends are real quick when you stand on conviction a lot of times and we did just that. And in some ways, good, it whittled down the friends list a little bit and that was probably a good thing in some ways. But the other part I want to touch on too is the part that you don't talk about. You occasionally hear about someone who has to, has a personal thing in their life where they can't make a board meeting or there's some struggles that they have that are very open. And this is true for every member on this board. And I realize there's plenty of people in this room who don't agree with me on much and I realize there's plenty of people in this room who agree with me a lot. But everybody on this board sacrifices a massive portion on their life, of their life, for essentially no pay, what essentially is volunteering. And I realize that the magisterial members get $12,000 roughly and I get a whopping 13 on top of, I get 13, so I get additional grand, I know, for seven times the constituents. So, and I want everyone to realize the sacrifices that every board member puts into this job, but not just the board members, the other people sitting on this dais, the countless calls that Dr. Walts and his staff get when we try to, and good natured. We're trying to rationalize, we're trying to figure out what our jobs are, we're trying to understand big problems. And we're, so we have a lot of questions to our clerk, to our attorney, to everybody that we have to deal with on a daily basis and work with. I shouldn't say deal with, but work with. I didn't mean it that way. I apologize, Sean.
They deal with us.
Yeah, that's true. I got it wrong. But we all, we all need support. We all need each other on occasion. We've all need a confidant to talk to because not everyone necessarily knows what we see every single day. They don't know the problems that we face. They don't know the things that we have to talk about in closed session and things like that. And so we have to rely on each other even when we disagree. We all have, we all have to sacrifice in our personal lives to show up at this dais twice a month, to go out and go to schools that aren't our children's, to go congratulate and to put the sacrifice in to better serve our community, which is we got involved for, involved in this business for. But with that, I want to make sure that everyone knows that I'm proud of this board and I'm proud of the sacrifices that every one of us make to serve our community. But even when we fight through that adversity, even when it doesn't look like there's any place to go, I'm going to quote my favorite animated fish, "Just keep swimming, just keep swimming, just keep swimming." It's citizens' comment time. I'm going to call off the names from the original list that we still have to work down. If I get the name wrong, I apologize and we'll see who's, and we'll move through this. The same rules still apply, three minutes, it'll turn yellow at 30 seconds, it'll turn red at zero seconds and we'll ask you to step aside. Proper decorum is to be used at all time. Our next speakers are Ben Purvis, Joseph George, John McCartel, Bridgette McCartel, Rohan Robotham, Mac Haddow, Jeannie Louder. It says Ann Darren, so I'm not exactly sure if that's two separate speakers or you got to use, but we can split that up either way. Brittany Malone, Carrie Beless, Margaret Lozell and Kevin Allen. Those are our next speakers. Is Ben here? Ben, you're up, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Dr. Walts. My name is Ben Purvis. I'm a county resident and my address is on file with the clerk. I've adjusted my notes since I wasn't permitted to speak before the vote, but as I have learned about the proposed policy change regarding gender identity, I know myself, my family, other friends, many in our congregation, other friends from other faith communities have been greatly concerned about the implications and the implementation of Policy 060, should the revision go forward. These concerns are real. Parents are concerned, students are concerned. We appreciate the guidance given to the superintendent. However, there is still concern about trust. It's hard to engender trust in the community when the ACLU's letter, published June 15th, is distributed by members of the board to concerned citizens in the community with, which contradict the guidance that's been provided, such as page, page three and four, excluding boys and girls who are transgender from the same restrooms as other boys and girls, subject them to discrimination on the basis of sex. And then at the end of the letter, Prince William County School Board must allow transgender students to use school restrooms and other sex segregated facilities that correspond to their gender identity. So to hear these conflicting messages from the ACLU letter being distributed by members of the board on social media and email with the guidance does not create trust in the community. We are still wondering how our concerns will be addressed. I know several families that are thinking about withdrawing their children from Prince William County Schools. I believe that God has wonderfully and immutably, unchangeably created each person as male or female and that these two distinct complementary genders together reflect the image and nature of God. And while I disagree with the proposed policy change that was approved this evening, I also believe that every person, every student, every teacher must be afforded compassion, love, kindness, respect and dignity. So we ask, rather than a repeat of this last year, can we enter into a greater dialogue with you and work through our concerns? Will you serve your community, particularly your faith community, by working to resolve these concerns? Thank you for your time. May God give you wisdom.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph George. Joseph George. John McCartel. John. Bridgette McCartel. Rohan Robotham. Mac Haddow.
My name is Mac Haddow from the Gainesville District. I'll make two quick points. I don't know that the comments that anyone makes at this podium after you voted on this policy would have made a difference in your vote, but neither do you. And you should have given the citizens the right to make their comments because this is a democracy and it's sad that you did not allow it to do so. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, you do not understand parliamentary procedure. You need to go back to the book. You were wrong in your ruling and you've consistently been wrong. Now, I, like earlier speaker and member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, our church strongly believes that we should support non-discrimination policies in employment and housing because we don't believe that there is a constitutional right of anyone to discriminate that is an employer or provides housing, a landlord or a mortgage. We believe that people should be protected there. But when it comes to the policy that you voted on tonight, we believe that there are two specific constitutional rights that are held by children. One is the right to privacy, which you addressed in part with Mr. Deutsch's amendment. But it's unfathomable that you would disagree or preclude a young girl in a locker room or in a bathroom to have a male by their own self-selection to come in to that bathroom and not sense that there is an invasion of their personal privacy. The right that Mr. Sawyer's talked about, the one, to protect the one. And that's what we're talking about, a constitutional right of privacy that is well documented, not only in the courts, but in the Constitution and the interpretation thereof taken by the courts. And the second right is that of religious liberty. Our church believes the gender selection occurs by divine Our church believes the gender selection occurs by divine right at birth, it doesn't change after that. And that is our religious right, our religious liberty, in order to have that belief and to hold it to be true. And the protection of our children in the school system derives from that, that constitutional right. So, Mr. Wilk, you said it right when you said we should, we should not be intervening on the rights of an individual student, and you stressed the safety based on an assault that was not either physically or sexually. But that assault on the right of an individual student, whose constitutional right to religious liberty and to their right of privacy should be protected, and it's that kind of assault that happens because of the psychological damage that occurs, because in that restroom, in that confrontation, that's where it occurs, and it's not reported to the police, it's found in our homes, where parents have to deal with it. And that's the tragedy. And so you can hold up that chart of all the school districts that do it, and you miss the most important function of that religious liberty and the right to privacy that should be constitutionally protected. And it's a sad day here in Prince William County when you didn't stand up for the rights of those citizens, those children and families, based on religious liberty and based on their constitutional right to privacy. I look forward to the day when you revoke this policy in the future, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, is Jeannie Lauder and Darren, are you both here? Are you guys speaking, you're listed together, but do you want to speak separately?
No, we're definitely separate.
You're separate, okay.
Male and female.
So it'll be Jeannie, Jeannie first, and then Darren second, okay?
I would also like to note, it is quite possible that the Lee Lauder that was announced when we first came in here could have been me, but I am the oldest of six, and I'm used to only things that start with J, so that could have been me. I did put in my submission, my submission on May 3rd, and again on June 8th at 8:33 a.m. So there are a couple of different things I'd like to note, knowing that I have such a short period of time. One is, we all have our stories, you all gave your stories, this is mine. I'm the mother of four children, I protect them with everything I have. That is very important to me, and as you have passed this policy, I ask you to really think through how this will be implemented, because my kids are waiting at home wondering if they're going to be homeschooled come September. One is, the second thing is, is your lack of communication with parents. As I have been involved in the Recall Ryan Sawyers effort from the beginning, I have talked to hundreds of parents who are against this. And non-parents, I want you to know that parents care about this issue, they want to know that their kids are going to be okay, whether they belong to the LGBTQ community or not, they want to know that their kids are okay. The other thing is, and this is very personal to me, I have a daughter with a neurological disorder who has to have the temperature at 66 degrees in our home, she has to wear shorts throughout the winter, she has to have accommodations in the schools in order to learn, but I am not asking the schools to put their temperature at 66 degrees for my daughter to be comfortable. This is important, because you are asking my daughters and my son to be uncomfortable. The other point that I want to make is, I am a counselor, I have worked with rape victims, I have worked with sexual assault victims, I have worked with children who were sexually abused, I have worked with pornography addicts as well as their spouses, I have seen what these things do to families. So I want to make sure that my son is not exposed to pornography, and by that I mean naked women in the locker room. So there are lots of different things that need to be addressed and that you need to think through. The other thing that's super important is, there are a lot of teachers that want to sign the Recall Ryan Sawyers, and they cannot, because they fear for their jobs, they fear for their jobs because they feel opposed to this policy. So you need to keep in mind, inform parents, inform teachers, and let them know how this is going to impact them, and let them have a voice. The other thing is, there are lots of people who do not want to hear.
Darren, you were up now.
So last week I was traveling, and the gate agent made me check my carry-on luggage, I'm sure you've all been there. I was concerned because of a quick layover, and the airline had not delivered my luggage the previous week on the outbound trip on time. The gate agent personally assured me that the luggage would get there, they even asked me to leave it at the top of the gate, and they would walk it to the plane, they told me it would be on time. And I'm sure that he was genuine in that assurance. Two and a half days later, when my rain-soaked luggage arrived, and I opened it to find everything as it would be in a rain-soaked luggage, it occurred to me that that gate agent had made assurances and promises he had no way of keeping. The assurances that this board has provided about the policy change that you just prematurely passed without knowing its impact, without possibly knowing its impact, because there were no regulations attached to it, is like the gate agent's assurances. I'm sure some of you believe those assurances, and some of those, I appreciate Mr. Wilk's diligence, but holding up, as Mac said, that the lack of reported felonies should somehow provide comfort, that this is not going to harm anyone, when many people, as has been pointed out, believe that the exposure to others in intimate settings is harm, is really appalling, and it points to the lack of communication with parents. It shouldn't have been dispositive, it should have been the beginning of a diligence process. Nine months ago, I stood here and said that every day, the parents in this district entrust those most precious to them into the care of this district. If you cannot ensure us that the policy change won't increase the risks to those children, you should either build the case for that over time, which you have not done, or modify the proposal until you can do so. Some of the guidance that was described has since been withdrawn, found by a federal court to be unconstitutional, and there's a lot of caution, as has been mentioned tonight, of the role of the states and others. What you could have done over the past nine months, I noticed that clearly there was a lot of organizing for pro and con, and making us to be for or against a policy, you could have gone and held informational town hall meetings throughout the district, you could have done that just over once a month and covered the entire district's high schools. You could have explained how those, the need for this, how people are being discriminated against, what the need is and why it's necessary, how the current method is insufficient. You could have pointed out how anti-discrimination law regarding gender identity as a protected class is new and unsettled, and there's no idea, for example, whether a transitioning PE teacher next year will be allowed admittance to a locker room that they were not this year, you don't know, and a court will decide that, you won't. So your policies are not going to be, provide assurance, if you can't do that, but I'll tell you, we will hold you morally and personally responsible for any harms that do result because of your actions.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brittany Malone. Brittany?
Hi, again, I'm a parent in the Gainesville District, I spoke at the last board meeting, and I just wanted to stick around and personally thank Mr. Deutsch, Mr. Brand, and Mrs. Satterwhite for voting no. Sorry. When I spoke last time, I spoke about the lack of due diligence, and I spoke about the lack of specifications of this policy change, and each of you spoke on that. From what I understand, your reason of voting no, because of the lack of due diligence, the lack of information, the lack of getting input from parents, and the lack of having a clear specification in place before voting on this, and I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing that and for addressing that, and I did appreciate Mr. Brand, your comment about not being a one-trick show. That's what I am, seeing this as an issue being brought up, it's really making me want to be very heavily involved. I feel very sorry now for Dr. Walts, the heavy burden that he now has on his shoulders. I know I'm not very, I guess, educated in how this all works now, but I see a very big problem of, you can work here, but you can't use the restroom you identify with, if you really are to not change any policies on how the restrooms and locker rooms and everything else is currently used. Isn't that a conflict, you can do this, but you can't do that? And I just have to say, like, I thought, I'm not a victim of sexual assault or molestation or anything like that, but stories I read is, a lot of people are afraid to tell when they've been assaulted, afraid to tell that they've been molested, afraid to come forward when they are put in situations that threaten them, or that make them afraid. I don't know if the rest of you took that into account, just because there are no reports yet, it doesn't mean that it is happening, that it's not happening, rather. I think a lot of it is just people are afraid now to come forward and tell you that it's happened to them. I will be one of those people that will be withdrawing my kids, and I will homeschool them until we can move out of the county. I, along with two other people that I've spoken with today, feel sick to our stomach that this has just happened. But again, thank you, Mr. Deutsch, Mrs. Satterwhite, and Mr. Brand, for voting no, and for all of your comments, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie, Carrie Beles, Margaret Lozelle, Margaret, and Kevin Allen, Kevin. Okay. I'm going to go to the other list here, I'm going to read off the next, we're going on to this, the one that Debbie sent early. Okay, so I'm going to read off roughly the next 10. So the next 10 speakers are Delegate Bob Marshall, Danica Rome, I will skip number three, Heather Mosher, skip number five, Liz Vohar, Gloria Jordan, Robbie Mosher, Darrell Jordan, Mary Roe Miller, and Mickey Sullivan and Evelyn Brumar, those will be the next speakers. Delegate Marshall, you're up, you can, you can go to the, I'm sorry, didn't mean to make you sit down, you can go straight to the podium, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before I speak, could I just ask that the board fix your website? September 7th, it hasn't been working, I think the first time you had the transgender meetings, I've been trying to access it for several days, and it just, it just won't work. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, the Constitution of Virginia states that the mere separation of the sexes shall not be considered discrimination. Mr. Chairman, you took an oath to uphold the Constitution, yet tonight, you broke your solemn oath. This important provision of the Constitution was also ignored in the ACLU unsolicited letter that was sent to you. Seven Virginia Attorney Generals, four Democrats, three Republicans, and the Virginia Supreme Court in 2000, all denied that localities have any authority to add protected classes to so-called discrimination policies without express approval of the General Assembly. Last fall, Superintendent Walts said the one-on-one approach was working. In May of 2016, The Washington Post reported, "The Garfield High School principal worked with a transgender student," noting that, quote, "His philosophy is to build a school around students, the solution was the single-stall bathroom in the main office." There have been no reported instances of sexual orientation discrimination in the past five years. Prince William could have continued to use the single-person facility. The fact that Mr. Wilk didn't find any problems only indicates he didn't ask the right questions. For example, he didn't ask whether or not crime reports are required from schools, he didn't identify the incidents of transgender individuals in the population, and he completely ignored that rape is significantly underreported. You only have to look at significant underreporting, for example, in Gwinnett County, Georgia, 24,000 instances of violence, including sexual assault, weapons charges and such, were completely unreported. You didn't ask the right questions, no matter, no wonder you found nothing, I'd like a copy of your report. You are going to have to face the question of whether or not you're going to have speech codes, why do I say that, even though you deny it? D.C. public schools have a policy, Minnesota public schools, the state of Washington, and Chicago public schools also have this policy. Fairfax School Board is making their Family Life Program transgender compliant, transgender indoctrination will start in grade seven. In 10th grade, students will be taught they can be, quote, "assigned the wrong sex at birth," and they can transition to living and presenting themselves as the gender that matches their gender identity. At sex, our sexes at birth is not assigned like a seat in a restaurant, our sex is determined at conception by DNA and chromosomes and reproductive organs, evidence on sonograms even before we're born. Under the First Amendment to our Constitution, no public school student may be forced to accept such miseducation as true, when clearly it violates religious beliefs of others. Mr. Walts, you're going to have a problem, there's at least 27 permutations of gender. The 2005 law that I wrote finally required reporting of some crimes which weren't being reported, it required parents to be told, it resulted from a kid bringing three firearms to a school because he was bullied, and the parents were never told. The communication here must be between parents and students, and you don't seem to want to do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Danica Rome, Danica, are you here? Danica? Heather Mosher, Heather? Liz Vohar? Gloria Jordan?
Thank you all for your hard work and dedication to Prince William County employees and schools. I appreciate my school board member, Justin Wilks, looking at all that data before making any decision. I too have read quite a few reports that there has not been a single documented report of gender-conforming boys dressing up like girls to gain access to girls' bathrooms. I would totally agree with that. However, what actions have been taken to survey kids of what does happen? Do kids always report every creep, every bully, every act of discrimination? As an African-American female, I've been profiled and discriminated against more times than I care to admit, and I've never filed a case. I would also say, from talking to parents in Maryland and other counties where this has already passed, that boys aren't dressing up like girls to go into a bathroom, they're just boys going into a bathroom. In this case, there were three boys who would brag in the guys' bathroom about going into the girls' bathroom if they want to. Some of the other boys recognized that they were creeps, and they would tell the girls if they knew the boys were about to go in. This is a violation of privacy, and the girls don't feel safe, so the other boys tried to protect them. I appreciate Willie Deutsch requesting the right to privacy to be included in the guidance. I was also told about a trans girl who was harassed by those boys in the girls' bathroom saying, "If he can be in here, so can we, we like titties too." That sounds a lot like bullying to me, and in a place that is supposed to be safe, in a bathroom, that is the antithesis of unity. Also, as I said in our last meeting, per my son, sex in bathrooms is already regularly occurring in high schools, both consensual and assault, without administration knowing about it. Clearly, the school cannot monitor every bathroom and identify if everyone is using the gender-appropriate facility. Please explain how you will keep bathrooms safe, how will teachers and administrators know what gender any child is identifying as, and what about the hundreds of outside visitors and volunteers that come in? Will the restrooms be made neutral? Please consider this as you seek guidance. The ACLU states, "Feeling safe or uncomfortable at school can negatively affect a student's ability to thrive and succeed academically, particularly if it results in that student avoiding school." Ms. Williams, I am saddened by your experience, and I appreciate your vulnerability in sharing that dark part of your life. There are numerous children in foster care that have been sexually abused, if they think someone is in the restroom that is not supposed to be there, that can cause further trauma. Have you considered how they might feel? I would also argue that there are more adopted kids who have been abused, mine included. It took years of therapy to get her to be okay to go into a bathroom, and she's only five, she was adopted as a toddler. As we move forward, please keep that in mind about people who have had sexual trauma. Finally, what I would ask that you would do is that we would train our teachers, counselors, staff, parents, and students how to support the LGBTQ community. They are vulnerable and feel alone, changing a policy alone doesn't protect them.
Thank you.
Please protect all of our kids.
Our next speaker is, I know Robbie's not here, Darrell Jordan, Darrell? Mary Roe Miller, Mary? Mickey Sullivan?
Hi, I wanted to let you guys know who I am, because if you know me, you might love me and might want to protect me, and anybody that's just like me. I am a victim of sexual assault, I don't share that with everybody, and I am a victim of rape, and it wasn't by any member of an LGBTQ community, it was by a heterosexual man, and not at school, it was at home and a place where I felt safe. So let me share a story with you about me being in a school system that didn't have any protections for LGBT youth. It's a true story, my story. I was a student in a system that didn't protect LGBTQ youth. I know that it was different, it was, I was different, I knew that I would be targeted, and that I had no protection. I knew that I would be targeted and that I had no protections. I headed, I heard the nasty jokes at school and at home, talk about LGBTQ people, seeing the bullies of kids who were just slightly looking gay or acting gay, that led to beatings, that led to off-campus jumpings, where hospitalization stays became the common. I chose to be closeted, not learning but striving, just trying to survive, not thriving but existing. Both my parents worked two jobs, paying taxes for me to be in public school education. I am the first-generation American, and I failed them, and I failed myself. I fought. I fought to protect my LGBTQ friends and myself. I might be, I might be little, I was, but I'm explosive. I have been broken, I have been beaten with a bat, I have been slashed with a blade, jumped by five kids at one time because they assumed I was LGBTQ. And I didn't have any protection to come to any teacher to tell them that. But the school was aware and told my parents. I lied to my parents, playing it straight because I knew that I would be disowned and homeless. I put my safety at risk, I put my health at risk, I killed my spirit just to live a lie to make others feel comfortable. Then when I found the strength to be who I am and to be honest and live my truth, I was disowned. I had no protection, no family, no support from a community or a tribe. I sold my plasma, sold my hair, did what I needed to do to live. I even entertained death. But I am stubborn, and that's why I'm here. I found my tribe, I found my community, and with their support and love, I am here to share my story, to fight and protect other students like me in Prince William County, to give them the opportunity that wasn't given to me, to be their advocate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers, I'm going to roll off about 10 or so. Our next speakers are Cassidy Ketchum, Deanna Baer, Cynthia Mohanty, Erin Edmund, Amy Cannon, Jim O'Connor, Ken Bodie, skipping a few here on the board so everyone knows, then Deanna Trejo, Anna Trejo, Alicia and Chris Smith, and Tim Cox. So with that, Cassidy Ketchum.
Okay, well, I guess my speech has changed a little bit. I wanted to read a quote to everyone. I have recently started working in DC. I was pre-K teacher here in Prince William County, and now I got, I still live in Prince William County, but now I'm working in DC. And yesterday after work, I went to the Jefferson Memorial, and there was a really good, I've been organizing for this vote, and yesterday there was a really good quote that I just would like to share that I thought was relevant to this. It's by Thomas Jefferson. "I am not an advocate for frequent chances in laws and constitutions, but laws and institutions must go hand in hand with the process of the human mind. As that becomes more developed, more enlightened, as new discoveries are made, new truths discovered, and manners and opinions change with the change of circumstances, institutions must advance also to keep pace with the times. We might as well require a man to wear still the coat which fitted him when a boy, as civilized society, to remain ever under the regime of other barbarous ancestors." Of their barbarous ancestors, sorry, I'm reading from a picture. But I thought it was a great opportunity tonight for the school board to update their policy to kind of fit where we are as a community in Prince William County, and to protect those of us who have been here since the beginning of Prince William County, people who are part of the LGBTQ community but are just now getting protected in public schools. And I just want to thank everyone who voted for it. Ms. Williams, Ryan, for your leadership on this, Lily Jessie, Diane, and Justin Wilk, thank you so much for voting for this. It will save lives in Prince William County, and it will help bring more economy here, too. Teachers will want to come here because we protect LGBTQ youth. And I also wanted to say that if Sean and Allison and Willie really need more research on this issue, you all have Google, you can research it. We have reached out to you and sent you emails about this topic. We've sent you peer-reviewed research, not research that is from 10 years ago. Great, then I don't understand what the confusion was tonight. I encourage you to read more on those topics that you're confused about, and to do your job and up, and figure out what it's, how it's going to affect the policies if you're so concerned about those issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deanna Baer.
Separation of church and state. Our forefathers knew how important that was. Please keep your religion out of my government, and the government should stay out of religion. Religion should have no place in any decision that you make as a government official. Schools should be a safe harbor for all students, teachers, and staff. Recently, a friend sent me a story about a high school student whose parents rejected him when they found out he was gay, but it was his school, his teachers, and his classmates that gave him that caring community, and he's now on his way to college with a scholarship. I've worked for 20 years in the criminal justice system. I was one of the 10 women that started the first rape treatment center in the nation. I have dealt with more pedophiles and rapists than most of you have ever even heard about or seen on your TV shows. I have never, in all of that time, had a member of the LGBTQ community be a pedophile, never. I've dealt with many, but never. I have dealt with many Pentecostal Christian preachers who were pedophiles, many of them. I also am a victim of being a pedophile. I was a child of four and five, and it was a preacher in his home. His brother was gay. When I grew up, I lived near his brother, and I was happy to take my three daughters to his house. They were safe. I never took them to the preacher's house. They weren't safe. I also want you to understand about bullying. And Miss Pedophile, if you think that Title VII took care of this, then why were you fighting to vote against this? If you think it's already covered, you shouldn't have any problem with this one. There is so much hate, there is so much hurt. I have many friends who are transgender, and they go back 30, 40 years. Nobody's going to want to be anything except who they are and be safe. That's all. It should be safe, and thank you for voting.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Mohanty. Cynthia?
Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairwoman Lily Jessie, other board members, thank you. Tonight, I would like to thank the Prince William County School Board for voting yes to add the words "sexual orientation" and "gender identity" to the nondiscrimination policy. Today, I stand in support and absolute solidarity to protect our children and our teachers with a now-approved policy update. Despite the stoking of fear, bigotry, and intolerance, we know this important decision was never about bathrooms. But this decision was about protecting the most vulnerable in our public schools. Now, more than ever in the era of a Donald Trump presidency, we have to make the deliberate choice to stand up for each other, reject hate, and demand that all deserve to be protected from discrimination. In the era of Trump, LGBTQ rights are being rolled back at a startling rate, and more Americans find themselves living in a constant state of fear. No one should ever have to fear losing his or her job, being harassed or bullied, or being left out because of whom they love, or because of their gender identity. I know for a fact that navigating through adolescence is difficult enough, and even more difficult when you're made to feel less than or that you don't deserve equal protections that we all have the right to be granted. Martin Luther King Jr. once proclaimed, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." Today, thank you for joining us in this fight to demand equality and protection for our students, our teachers, our PWC staff, our friends, our neighbors, our family members, and also to ensure that the arc of the moral universe bends towards justice tonight. Together, we are one nation and are all created equal. So the board's ultimate decision goes so much further, being a political statement or proclamation to add to our divisions, but a chance to proclaim that LGBTQ rights are human rights, and human rights are LGBTQ rights. Tonight, we had the opportunity to show that love is love is love is love is love, and that the moral fabric of our character is strong in Prince William County. And tonight, we did just that. Today, during LGBTQ Pride Month, together, we can make a difference. We proved that when we see the rights of others being infringed on, we just don't sit idly on the sign lines we join in the arena. Today's vote was a matter of life and death for every child who has ended their own life because of having endured endless bullying because they weren't accepted or protected to live in their own truth and be their beautiful selves. One life loss is one too many, especially when we don't do all we can to ensure that everyone's given a safe space to live up to his or her God-given potential. Because I firmly believe, after all, we are all God's children who loves us all just the same. In the words of Harvey Milk, "It takes no compromise to give people their rights. It takes no money to respect the individual. It takes no survey to remove repressions. Burst down those closet doors once and for all, and stand up and start to fight." For the members who did vote, I appreciate it, and for the ones who didn't, I definitely understand your point of view. I don't hate you. When the dust settles, history will judge which side you are on.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Cannon. Amy? Okay. Looking at the page here. Jim O'Connor?
Good evening, Board. Another long night, I see. My name is Ken Bodie. I live in the Auaquan Magisterial District. My address is on file, and on the internet now, thanks whoever did that. I wanted to first thank each and every one of you. I know that this has been a year-long process, and I know that no matter where you came from, when you came into this room, you took a long time to think about this. This wasn't just a snap decision. This wasn't something that you just came to as a point of your own perceptions and your own beliefs. You talked to folks in your districts, you talked to folks from all walks of life, and being someone who was just a candidate for the House of Delegates, I know there's a lot of pressures from everyone, from your family, from advisors, from people in your community, from your, from everyone. So I want to commend you for coming to the decision that you did, regardless of how you came to that decision, regardless of how you voted. I sent an email to each and every one of you earlier on this week because I believe that we should be wholeheartedly supporting this addition to our, our policy. Initially, I didn't really want to have a stake in this because I don't frankly have any children in the school system right now. My fiance and I both don't work in the school system. But after I've spoken to people over the long course of the last few months, I reflected on that. I've looked at the fact that many of the things that folks talk to me about, those both faculty and students, share a lot of experiences that I had in my youth. I'm from LA originally, one of the most diverse, inclusive places you can think of. But being someone who's biracial, you don't always have a home, like Lori talked about. There's people that look at, look down on you, whether they're black, whether they're white, whether they're Hispanic. And I was beaten up almost every other day when I was in elementary school. I was called El Chocolate and all that other stuff, just because I looked different. And when we went to, went to the administrators about it, they didn't have anything to say because they'd rather protect the reputation of their school than have anything out there about that going on. So as I talked to people, I saw that many of the things that I felt in my personal life was reflected in how people were talking in their lives, their lived experiences. Because we talk about racism, we talk about homophobia, these things aren't always overt. They're not always something that people go after someone, and they say, "I'm going after you because you're X." There are systemic things that go on in our society that are pervasive, that go under the currents, that we know that even if no one said anything specific, they look at you a certain way because you're X, Y, and Z. They treat you slightly different than they treat everyone else. And that gets at the heart of what we're looking at here. Because at the end of the day, regardless of your faculty or students, you should feel that we acknowledge you for who you are, we respect you for who you are, and yes, we protect you for who you are. Regardless of where you come from, regardless of what you look like, and regardless of who you love. Because that's the foundation of our country, that regardless of where you come from, you should be welcome, and you should feel protected. So that's the basis of what I believe and why I support it, and thank you again for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diana Trejo. Diana? And then Anna Trejo? Alicia and Chris Smith?
Chairman and Board? My name is Chris Smith. I'm here on behalf of myself and my wife Alicia, who couldn't be here. And Ms. Ralston, she sends her regards. She's not going to be able to come by afterwards and talk to you, of course, because she's not here. But she really appreciated the discussion that you guys had yesterday, and she wanted me to pass that along. And I think, I think I had some notes prepared, but I think I just want to touch a little bit on that. You know, I think it was not an easy conversation because you and she came from different perspectives. But I think at the end of the day, talking to you and understanding where you were coming from and the perspective that you would consider to form your opinion was really helpful to her. And I think that informed discussion that we had later on that night that kind of allowed us to learn things about our position. But ultimately, I, I think that is what didn't happen over this entire process. I think that we did not have the opportunity to dialogue with you, the board, and the board with the community to really elicit feedback from diverse perspectives. We, we care about LGBTQ students and, and the harm that they face on a daily basis, and, and, you know, hearing some of the testimony today, that's heartfelt, and that moved me. But there was no opportunity to understand that, and vice versa. I, I believe that, I don't think that our concerns, those opposed to this, were also legitimately acknowledged. So, you know, what I would propose is that, now that the motion has been passed, and I appreciate the addition of the amendment to protect privacy, that we come together, we, we, we figure out a way, maybe a framework similar to the task force that was suggested, to solicit feedback from the community to, to help form the regulations that Mr., that Dr. Waltz is going to have to come up with. What I wanted to discuss prior to the decision, had I had the opportunity to speak about it, was that, you know, we, we never really had good input on what was the underlying set of issues that was driving the desire for the change of the policy, right? We asked the question, but at least I wasn't seeing a lot of response and input on what that was. So let's form a group that can understand and study the concerns and underlying issues here from all sides, you know, equally represented across your constituents across the county. You know, then come together, based on what those issues are, define what your desired outcomes are, right? And also, based on those desired outcomes, identify the solutions that'll achieve those while still respecting the legitimate concerns of those who have legitimate concerns. And then analyze what those solutions could be and provide recommendations to form these regulations. Ultimately, we desire that you protect our children's privacy while still protecting students who are struggling, who are victims of various forms of abuse. We want to make sure that all concerns are being addressed and listened to. Right now, we feel that they're not, and we ask that you please do that, instead of a framework to do that going forward, so that all your constituents can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Cox. He may have. I'm sorry if I missed him. Okay, so skipping ahead, Board members, just so you know, I'm on, I'm on number 46 on, on the current list. I'm going to call some, the next group of speakers here. Patrick O'Neal, William Card, Langston Carter, Joseph Gilli, Jennifer Gilli, Denise Duncan, and Melissa Sokban. Anybody here of that? Anyone? I just called? Yes, ma'am. Anyone else of the 1, 2, 3, 6, or 7 speakers I just called? Anyone else? Your name, ma'am?
My name is Melissa Sokban, and the clerk has my contact information on file. Winston Churchill said, "Success is not final, failure is not fatal. It takes courage to continue that counts." Prince William County citizens who oppose this policy made today have courage. I am a teacher, I am a mother, I am a daughter, and a sister. And I oppose this policy change today that happened because it's unnecessary, unwarranted, and unsafe for all our children. It was an uninformed, not identified or well-defined policy. The sexual orientation and gender identity laws are not about the freedom of LGBT people to engage in certain actions, but about coercing and penalizing people who in good conscience cannot endorse those actions. By voting for this policy change today, you have penalized me and my family, who in good conscience cannot- conscience cannot endorse these actions. This policy infringes on my beliefs. Before any law or policy can be justified and crafted, there must be a documented need for it. Advocates of sexual orientation and gender identity policy changes must therefore provide evidence proving the need for this coercive policy change, a requirement that the Prince William County School Board has failed to meet. There has been no evidence or documentation or information provided on this policy change. Referring to the Prince William Times, June 16th article, Mr. Sawyers, "Countless is not a number. There are no Prince William County numbers published to warrant or substantiate this policy change." Ms. Williams, the ACLU VA letter, which was mentioned earlier and previously, Department of Justice has come back and said everything was rescinded on the previous president's policy. Maybe "policy" is not the right word there. But this policy change voted today does open our county up to lawsuits. And as a Prince William County taxpayer, I think it's a waste of money to litigate. And that's what's going to happen. Mr. Wilk, your impressive research was well documented. However, did you speak to any of the 100-plus schools and education centers within our county on this issue? I think we're in a race to the bottom, and right now, we're winning. Mr. Deutsch, you had a great amendment that will hopefully slow down that race. The reality is, this policy change is not just symbolic. It will have real impact on people's lives by voting for Policy 606.
Thank you.
Finally, because this policy change went outside the Board process with no justification form completed, this policy change will be null and void.
Our next speaker is Rayelle McKennitt. I'm going to go through the list here. Rayelle McKennitt, Josh Hetzler, Richard Wiley, Andrea Lafferty, Joe Downer, Steve Bender, Bethany Kim, Deborah Weber, Kimberly Dalrymple, Patrick Mooney, Chuck Azaduran, Hala Ayala, David Turner, Jeremy Cox, Brian Shaw, Dustin Atkinson, and Hillary Asquena. Rayelle?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. Since this measure has already passed, I'm hoping that my comments will inform the guidance that the superintendent will put forth and maybe even regulations that the Board will consider in the future. First, codifying and providing institutional or governmental approval for gender dysphoria is dangerous for minors. Second, the encompassed group needs clearly defined parameters for the purpose of governmental implementation, since when it is broadly determined at the whims of underage students, it is subject to abuse. Third, changes to this policy must consider the right of all students for bodily privacy, thank you, Mr. Deutsch, and equal competition in sporting events. And finally, there is an inherent assault risk and safety issue in mingling genders, since gender identity and sexual orientation are not related according to the WebMD site. Since many of those points have already been covered extensively by everybody here, I will stick with the first one, which is that codifying gender dysphoria is dangerous to minors. And should gender dysphoria in minors be acknowledged by authority figures as a right deserving of equal protection before the scientific, medical, governmental, and parental communities have reached that decision? Many have counted this cost, have indicated that encouraging children to make life-altering decisions at a young age results in high suicide rates amongst transgendered individuals and increased, rather than abated, mental health issues. While as many as 80% of transgendered youth outgrow those feelings in adulthood, they suffer the lasting consequences of their decision, including permanent sterility caused by sex-change hormones, the loss of healthy body parts, and compressed ribs, collapsed lungs, and back pain from chest compression devices. Dr. Paul McHugh, a distinguished service professor of psychiatry for Johns Hopkins, states that policymakers and the media are doing no favors either to the public or the transgendered by treating their confusions as a right in need of defending, rather than as a mental disorder that deserves understanding, treatment, and prevention. And Carrie Stella, who underwent a pediatric transition, blogs about her regret and detransition on YouTube. Courtney Finlayson, a pediatric endocrinologist who has prescribed cross-sex hormones to minors, warns that minors may not understand the full ramification of their decision. We don't protect a minor's right to engage in other risky behaviors. We don't let them drink. We don't let them, because it's dangerous to themselves and others, they're not mature enough to handle it, and we should not treat this issue any differently. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh Hetzler. Josh? Josh? Richard Wiley? Aaron Lafferty? Joe Downer?
Mr. Chairman, members of the School Board, Dr. Walts, my name is Joe Downer. I've been a resident of Prince William County for 23 years. I'm a product of this school system, Woodbridge High School, and a husband of a kindergarten teacher. Earlier this evening, you voted to include sexual orientation and gender identity in the school's non-discrimination policy. And while I can sympathize with some of the motives that led many of you to vote yes to this item, I do stand in disagreement. Nevertheless, I'll respect the results of this vote. We will see what happens. Ms. Williams, two weeks ago, in a presentation made at this board completely unrelated to 060, you stressed the importance of defining one's terms in a conversation, and I couldn't agree more. And that's a concern I have with this, is that I still don't feel that many terms are defined. And we even had a little back and forth with that tonight. And I think that's where a lot of concern stems from. I've been floored by so many of the testimonies made tonight on both sides. And like many of you, my heart's just been cracked open for folks from all sorts of backgrounds here. So many of my notes are kind of irrelevant now. Essentially, I mean, it really just comes down to that definition of terms. How do we define discrimination? How do we define prejudicial treatment? How do we define inclusive practices? One concern I had during your town hall meeting last night, Mr. Sawyers, is the question was raised about providing professional development opportunities for staff and teachers to learn gender-inclusive practices. And I just don't know what that means. There's the potential there for that to violate religious freedom and thoughts there. And I will say, you know, my wife, who's a kindergarten teacher here, as I've already said, she teaches her students to treat each other with dignity and respect because they're people worthy of it. And that goes without saying. If the example I mentioned earlier, if this political bent, if this worldview is forced, what would happen to her then if someone disagrees? Is she going to be sued, fired, forced to resign? Again, just a list of questions that I have. You would run the risk in losing, in my not-so-humble opinion, the best kindergarten teacher this county has ever had the privilege of calling an employee. So I know there's a lot of anger here, and I don't want to add to that. And I'm not here to attack any of you or anybody here. I'm here to tell you, regardless of where you fall in this debate, your hope will not be found, and your joy will not be satisfied in winning arguments or changing or opposing policies. The hurt that is in this room on both sides will not be solved in winning arguments. It rarely ever is. But in the person of Jesus Christ, all have sinned, everybody in this room, myself included, and fall short of the glory of God. But in spite of this, God exhibits true love in the life, death, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. Jesus took the wrath owed to us that we may be called blameless, not by our own doing, but by putting our faith in Him. He took the bullet for us that we may live.
Thank you, sir.
Christ loves you. Christ fights for you. Christ died for you.
Our next speaker is Steve Bender.
You are so much more than this life.
Sir, please step aside. Your time is up. Your time is up. Steve Bender?
My name's Beth Ann Kim, and I'm special tonight because I'm not talking about Policy 60. Seriously, not a word. My son tried to get into TJ last year, and as he was going through the process of applying for TJ, I found out that Faulkier, Loudon, Fairfax, all start math acceleration in fourth grade. We don't start it until sixth grade. Fairfax County has their most advanced cohort in geometry in seventh grade. Our most advanced cohort is in math and geometry in eighth grade. We should at least be doing what our neighboring counties are doing, if not more. We need to start math advancement sooner. Ideally, for the middle school, this would be a long-term thing and not my focus tonight, but we should have centers where we can cluster our most advanced students so they can be doing geometry in seventh grade like they are in Fairfax County. That will be a great lead-in for Osborne Park, and it would make us look better for those who want to go to TJ. We don't want them going to TJ, but you understand what I'm saying there. So my son really didn't like elementary school. He was bored, especially fourth and fifth grade. He was hating elementary school. When he got to middle school and was in the hyper-advanced class, he started enjoying math and started enjoying school. He was challenged. Now that he's in high school in Battlefield, he's enjoying school even more because he's getting challenged. We need to have that challenge available to all of our students. Right now, they're evaluated as they go into sixth grade. One on-ramp for that program. Some children go into Osborne Park, and that's a second teeny-tiny ramp for a very, very small number of students. We need to make this available to all our students. We need more on-ramps. If you have a child and they don't click with their fifth-grade teacher, they're having a bad year, maybe their parents are deployed, something happens, it's not a good year. That child isn't getting into this program. If you allow an on-ramp in fourth grade, the third-grade teacher's evaluating them, the fourth-grade teacher's evaluating them, fifth-grade teacher's evaluating them. When they get to sixth grade and in middle school, right now, the program is set up so that they have a compaction of three years in one year. They're not getting all of the components of math. There are certain concepts that are skipped. It's a cold, hard fact. If we change it and they start accelerating in fourth grade, you can change the program. It's spread over more years. They don't have to skip those facts. When they get into middle school, you can change the programs lightly for them so that they have an option in the summer, the ones who are recommended by administrators and teachers, they will be able to get in by doing a summer school class of algebra or geometry. The ones that are done in high school, allow them to do them with teacher recommendation in the summer, get back on that program. You will have more children in that program. You will have the kids. I have no one here. There's no one, we're not all here in blue. I'm not here about the kids whose parents advocate for them. My kids are in because I can advocate for them. The ones who need this are the ones whose parents aren't here to advocate for them. You will get the minorities. You will get the kids who are being missed because they don't get the advocates.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Teachers support this when I talk to them, by the way. And I'm here to place my kids benefiting from this.
Our next speaker is Deborah Weber. Deborah? Kimberly Dalrymple? Patrick Mooney? Chuck Azaduran? Hala Ayala? David Turner? Jeremy Cox? Brian Shaw? Dustin Atkinson? Hillary Asquena?
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed somebody. I apologize. Which one did I miss?
Brian Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I'd have to say, Mr. Sawyers, it's a shameful thing you've done. It's a shameful board that you've led to believe that this is proper, because we're willing to risk our entire, our children, for the sake of a politically correct thing. I'm not judging. I'm just saying, having a grown man into your little girl's bathroom, or a worker, a teacher, a young boy, a teenager, you're willing to risk your own life's blood for this? May God help us. You know, and I say, board members that have supported Ryan Sawyers on this, you've done this deliberately. You're not, you're culpable. And you've chosen to be this way. And, Mr. Sawyers, this was your plan, and this was what you've done, and regretfully, you've succeeded. This is Prince William County. This is where probably the majority of legislators, national legislators, live, because it's better than Maryland insofar as taxes or in terms of just the people we are, you know? And I don't mean I'm so proud, but you know, just the way, there's good people here. And you have led in a very dangerous policy in a way of life. And since it's Prince William, this will get attention, probably what you wanted, too. May God forgive you, you know? And may you come to realize what you've done, and you have orchestrated. And I'm sorry for those of you who have agreed with him, because this is serious. You know, this isn't about inclusivity. This is about protecting our children. And you know, if I desire to burn houses down, because I really do enjoy it, you shouldn't include me either in that plan or policy. And I could go for another minute, but I won't. I'd just say, you've done damage, and you've done it willfully, and shame on you. God bless. You have done harm, and you've done it intentionally. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dustin Atkinson? Dustin? Hillary Asquena? All right. And then I'm going to read off this next round of names here. Kai Pollock, Augustine Payne, Andrea Miller, David Schrock, Denise Duncan, Timothy Arkley, Tara Aktas, Xavier Torres, Jennifer Woolard, Lauren Jacobs, Wally Kubitz, Cynthia Snyder, Yuleni Lopez, and Ryan Orr. Kai Pollock?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Board members, Dr. Walts. My name is Kai Pollock, and my address is on file. A year ago, I was working for the federal government, whereby the power of the non-discrimination clause they have, I could be a human. I am a gender queer person. My pronouns are they/them. I learned about being able to ask what was due there. I didn't have to conform. To them, I was the first transgender person to work for their agency. To me, I was the first one they knew about. More recently, I was hired at a Prince William County Middle School to teach for the ED center-based students. From the first day, my principal, administration, and fellow staff have treated me as the person I am, rather than me pretending to be someone I'm not. I recognize this may not have been the case at every school. When I was a teacher assistant at Lee-Sylvania Elementary School, I found it difficult to speak up for myself, especially when I didn't know, when I didn't think I would be legally protected. Thanks to my experience at the Capitol, I know I can't go back. I can't go back to being someone I'm not. Lee-Sylvania was also hard because there was no non-gendered restrooms. Imagine trying to ask Human Resources which schools have non-gendered bathrooms. I was a little nervous, but lucked out in speaking with someone from HR who had transferred from the Building Facilities Department. But my current school, while welcoming as it is, may not be my forever home. My position is dependent on student numbers. I could be transferred as late into the school year as September 30th. How do I know my next school will be welcoming as Bull Run? With the non-discrimination clause that you voted on tonight, I am now assured that it will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Augustine Payne, Andrea Miller, David Schrock, Denise Duncan, Timothy Arkley, Tara Aktas, Xavier Torres, Jennifer Woolard, Lauren Jacobs.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Lauren Jacobs. My pronouns are she/her. My address is on file. The lessons that otherness makes someone less deserving of kind, just treatment is a lesson too easily learned by children, teens, and adults alike. Queerness can be invisible. For most of us, the default was to be in the closet. The lesson that queers should hide their otherness at work or school not only teaches us that our queerness is disgusting and offensive, but also deprives us of kinship, modeling, and representation. It compounds the feelings of otherness. Last year, my partner and I talked to a group of Prince William students that were part of the Gay Street Alliance at their high school. of the Gay-Straight Alliance at their high school. Those 12 students told us that there were no queer teachers at their school. The teacher mentor of the club, who was straight, had looked. Their school had over 250 teachers working there. I told them that, of course, there were queer teachers at their school, but they were clearly in the closet at work. There were over 250 teachers at their school, and out of those who were queer, none of them felt safe being out of the closet in their school's community. It's clearly a huge problem. When I went to Woodson High School myself, I accompanied a friend of mine who had been beaten up for being gay to the principal's office. My friend's clothing had been torn during the attack, and he was badly bruised. The principal told us that it was my friend's fault for looking the way that he did. He did not even take down the names of the attackers. My friend continued being bullied and beaten up throughout high school. I was bullied for being queer there, too. We thought it was normal. We thought we had no recourse. Things have thankfully changed a little in the last 20 years. But when my partner and I talked to the Gay-Straight Alliance at that high school, the students told us that they were often insulted, threatened, and harassed for being queer by their classmates. But they thought it was normal, and they thought that they had no recourse. Thank you for giving them recourse tonight.
The front page of a September 1997 issue of the Prince William Journal newspaper reported on an 11th-grade student at Stonewall Jackson High School, right here in Prince William County, named Amy Smelser. As part of an English class, Amy and the other students were required to read a book that she described as being explicitly vulgar and filthy. Her father objected. School officials at Stonewall said she either had to read the book or drop the class. Amy's father then took the step of copying parts of that book and stood in the parking lot of Stonewall Jackson High School and distributed those copies to other parents, saying, "This is what your kids are being required to read in this school." In response, the commissars at Stonewall Jackson High School ordered the man off the property and threatened to arrest him if he didn't comply. This dirty books issue has come up from time to time since then in Prince William County and elsewhere, and in fact, was the subject of legislation that was proposed in this past session of the General Assembly. This dirty books issue raises some of the same questions as tonight's present transgender issue. Question number one, why the constant luring of our youth toward the gutter? And question number two, why must the concerns of parents for the moral safety of their own children be constantly trampled and disregarded? Let's be very clear about this. This transgender issue and the homosexual movement behind it comes straight from the pits of hell. Few things in Scripture are condemned as vehemently as homosexuality. Some persons claim to be persons of faith and in favor of this policy. In other words, only believe, and anything goes. Scripture tells us, "Thou believest that there is one God; thou doest well." The devils also believe and tremble. Bottom line, we as a nation are going down. As one lady said, we are on a race to the bottom. And it seems that we are doing everything we can as a nation to turn against the Lord, to spite the Lord, and to become as perverse as we possibly can. We are going down as a nation and as a culture, and this board tonight voted to become part of that downward course. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Kubitz. Cynthia Snyder. Yuleni Lopez. Ryan Orr. I will now go to the list of persons who signed up at the door. Barbara Larmore. Barbara Larmore. Emily Reynolds. Adam Asenza. Shaleen, I'm sorry, Colleen Miller. Charles Martin. Lori Williams. Different spelling.
Different spelling.
Yes. Nicole Wilbur. Jo Anstein. Maduke Ecker, A.K.L.H. And Priscilla Hatfield. Be there, door more speakers, just meeting, I'm sorry.
You may have a week to go to the clerk asking to speak.
Jim Amaral, right? I don't see your name on the list. Jim Amaral?
I sent an email.
Yeah, Jim Amaral.
According to what I sent on the website.
I've called them all.
Oh, you've called everyone on there?
Mm-hmm.
AMR.
AMR.
We can do this. We can do this.
Pretty simply, with no objection?
No.
No objection? Yes, sir, you can wrap it up.
Jim Amaral, Neapsco District, and my name wasn't filed on the email. But I'm a county employee, a temporary county employee. I grew up in Prince William County, was a county, went to Prince William County Schools. In an email I sent to you last fall, I recounted the fact that during my time in high school, middle school and high school, I was bullied for my sexual orientation, or my perceived sexual orientation. I was not out at the time. I student-taught in Prince William County, and I taught for 36 years in Prince William County full-time, retired, and now I'm working as a temporary employee and substitute teacher. In my time in Prince William County School as a professional teacher, I started with the Virginia Education Association, the GLBT Caucus. I also was in charge of a community forum on GLBT issues. And I also spoke in another community forum on, it was a debate on the GLBT side. That was a hard decision for me, because I was teaching, even though I was not openly out in the school because I'm afraid a parent may complain, and there might not be some understanding supervisor. When I went to speak publicly and knew that some things were being videotaped and shown on the television, I had to question, should I do this? But I felt that I did need to do it, because I needed to clarify the issues. I needed to be a speaking voice for the professionals and for the students who were in the school who unfortunately didn't get to hear my voice as a teacher. At that time, when I was more active before going into the community, I was fortunate enough to have a principal who judged me not on my sexual orientation, but on my qualities as a teacher. I wanted the principal to be aware that I would be in the community, and it is possible that a parent could hear what I had to say, and that if they did not like what I had to say, that they might complain, and I wanted the principal to be prepared for that. Later on, years, several years later, the Prince William County School Board decided to put posters in the schools that said, "Prince William County Schools Do Not Discriminate." They didn't give the full discrimination statement. They just said they didn't discriminate. I had to walk by that poster every day. It was in our school, it was in a stairwell. And every time I took my students down the stairwell, I saw that poster. And every time I saw it, I said, "That poster is a lie, because I don't feel safe being out in this school." Thank you tonight for taking that lie away.
Thank you, sir. And with no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.